Good evening, I'm calling to order the continued adjourned regular Fairfax Town Council meeting for July 12th, 2022. Michelle, can we have a roll call please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
I'm here.
Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Cutrone.
Present.
And Mayor Hellman.
I am here, thank you. And may I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard motion, Cutrone, second. Goddard, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrone.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Eyes all.
Okay. Um. Sorry, I'm just looking at the online agenda versus my old one.
Was there anything to report out on closed session?
There is nothing to report out on closed session.
Thank you.
So we will move on unless there's any announcements from my colleagues, we can move on to the regular agenda.
I could go ahead and make the announcement about an event called Ready and Resilient Ross Valley. This is the Fairfax, the Fairfax event on Friday, that's this Friday, from 4:00 to 5:30 in Perry Park over by the Redwood Stage. We'll have representatives from the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, from the Ross Valley Fire Department, we'll have our very own Chief Tabaranza and Town Manager Heather Abrams, and several others who will be speaking about emergency preparedness in Fairfax. And folks will get a chance to meet the new Ross Valley Fire Emergency Preparedness Coordinator and ask whatever questions you might have, hopefully receive some useful information as we are deeply in fire season. So please join us, Perry Park, bring your own chair, very important. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Renee. Anyone else? Okay, um, I'm going to read the land acknowledgement, the Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the coast Newwauk people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. I'm going to reread the meeting protocol, I think that's important. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings, the council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language or ridiculing the character or motives of council member staff or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. Um, so we just have the regular agenda. Do we do the open time for public expression for items not on the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is, as everybody knows, a continuation of last Wednesday's meeting. Power went out, so we are, we took the items we had not yet covered. We continue the meeting, adjourned it, it's an adjourned, continued, regular meeting.
Right.
And so we're picking up where we left off. That's why we don't have all of the stuff we would normally have at the beginning because we covered that. There's no consent calendar because we approved it, except for item 18, which is the first item on your agenda because it was pulled off as consent and it would have been the next item, you would have heard, but the power went out.
Yep, I got it. I personally felt the protocol and the land acknowledgement was important to reiterate because we don't necessarily have the same members of the public present today as we did last week. Okay. Um, so with that, then we dive right into the regular agenda is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay. So item number 18, which as you said was pulled from consent. Heather, was that yours, your item?
Yes, so this is a letter, a draft letter to the local school board regarding the local children's center. And my understanding is that the council wanted to pull this for potential redrafting. And my suggestion would be that you might either send this to a subcommittee for redrafting and authorize the mayor to sign at that time, or send it to the mayor to redraft and send as appropriate for the council.
Yeah, I had some suggested changes but didn't want to, you know, wordsmith it. I, um. Well, I guess this is my comment time. We should open it up for the public before I provide commentary. Let's do that. Thank you, Heather.
Okay, uh, let me just, that was faster than I was expecting. Started, uh, and. Any members of the public wanting to make a comment on this item only? Now is the time to raise your hand. You have three minutes. I see a hand raised and it's Erica Milligan, you're unmuted now to make your comment on this item only.
I just wanted to call out my support for the Fairfax Children's Center. I'm in the Deer Park neighborhood and, and I strongly encourage the town to do whatever you can to help maintain the children's center and the services that it provides.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Frank Egger, and you are unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Frank Egger, Meadowway, here in Fairfax. The staff report says the town of Fairfax has no jurisdiction over the parties and their lease. These are the facts. Deer Park School, which is home to the Fairfax San Isomo Children's Center, is located in incorporated Fairfax. The roadway into the school from the Porteous Marina intersection up to Deer Park School is also in Fairfax Town Limits. That was the condition of the annexation. We were not allowed to have an island annexation, so we had to have a continuous strip of land between the previous town limits, the existing town limits, and Deer Park School. When, when we annex Deer Park School and the Porteous roadway to the school, we required a high-pressure fire hydrant to be located in front of the school, and it's still there. MMWD and Ross Valley Fire recently tested that hydrant, and I think they've, they've set the results to you. Should the children's center be forced to close, Fairfax ends up with total jurisdiction. The property will have to be secured with 24/7 security. Any future use must be consistent with Fairfax zoning. So Fairfax does have a stake in what happens at Deer Park School, so please get involved and keep involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no further hands raised. Oh, yes, I see one. And that is Joe McGary, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, thank you, council, for, for taking the step to write this letter of support and, yeah, the, the children's center, yeah, it's just such an important part of the community and a true, yeah, beacon of equity, you know, within this town as we, you know, worked so hard for the last two years to start new programs that create equity. We, we have this longstanding incredible example of equity and just anything that you can do to protect it. And really, I saw the word scope of authority in the letter. And I'm hoping that you really broaden, you know, what, what that is and what, what's possible. And we do so much in Marin and even in Fairfax, you know, to, we, we, we purchase, you know, we make acquisitions of open space to, to protect land. And I, I, I hope that you strongly consider making, you know, making a purchase of this living space to, to protect people. Yeah, it's just a, a really, really important part of the community. And I know a lot of, a lot of folks, a lot of families, as we move on to talk about renters protections and it's all, all of this is for the poor, you know, it's such a fragile, fragile state that they're in. And while we, you know, work on, on renter protection for them, if we, if we take away childcare, the equation still doesn't add up and they, and they don't survive in Marin. So thank you for this first step of writing a letter and, and I hope you continue to show support and really, really look at what that scope of authority is and what's, what's possible and maybe moving beyond what, what traditionally we've thought is possible. Thanks.
Thank you. I see no other speakers. Okay, we'll bring it back. So it's okay, I was gonna, um. I liked the letter. I had some structural changes that I mentioned to Heather. And I'd also like to see a more, a stronger statement that we hope or expect a solution that keeps the center in its current location or at a minimum in the San Isomo Fairfax region, the Ross Valley School District region, without disruption to the children and the families in terms of service or education or support, however you want to put it. So I would, I would propose that Renee and I form a subcommittee and draft this, if you're okay with, if the council is okay with that. Go ahead, Barbara.
So I've worked over the years to secure funding through the county for the children's center. And I've worked with the children's center one-on-one, so I would like to be part of that subcommittee since I've been involved in the children's center. And I have worked with Heidi Tomsky, the executive director, as well as Eric Schweringer, who's the assistant. And another piece to add to this letter is we definitely need to CC Heidi Tomsky on this letter.
For sure.
So I would like to be part of it. Heidi reached out to me during all this. You know, if, if that's not supported, I'll support whatever you guys do.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't raise my virtual hand. Yeah, thanks for bringing it, for bringing it back and bringing it for discussion. It wasn't, it wasn't cooked and I don't think the messaging was clear. I think part of the reason that some of this messaging isn't clear is that, as Joe said, we haven't explored the scope of our authority. Frank Egger also made mention that there are things that I don't know about our scope of authority and what it is that we can and can't do in another elected body's jurisdiction, if you will, and their property as property owners. And so in bringing together a subcommittee, I think it's really important that we look at the whole picture. We look at this holistically. I think we can assume and we can say very, very confidently that this council supports the children's center and all that the children's center has been and will be in our community, we hope. But I think there's certain things that we don't take responsibility for that we can actually do more with. So I would look forward to being part of a subcommittee so that we can recraft a letter of support, but also taking into account what it is and really looking deep as to what it is that this town can actually do here as we're telling another elected body what they should be doing. So I think that there is some work to do here and it's not just a letter expressing our feelings, but it's a letter of really digging deep to see how it is that we can contribute to a better solution for this whole thing as it's complex, as we know. So I would like to be on that and being that I'm the alternate to the school board and Stephanie is the, is the school board liaison or representative. I think it makes sense for us to look as we have a relationship with that school board over many, many years, as well as I have also done quite a bit of work with the directors of the children's center. Thanks.
Barbara, do you still have your hand up from last time?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something. I'll defer if, if that is what is wanted, but I just want to say one thing. Having worked with the Department of Education and school districts all across the state in my former career, it is still school district property and school districts do not have to get local permits or we don't, we don't have authority to zone unless the school district completely got rid of that property. So just one thing to think about. I've had a lot of experience with school districts statewide. Thank you. But I'm fine with you guys being on that subcommittee.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, actually, I think Councilmember Ackerman's hand up was, was, his hand was first, but I can go.
I thought you and Renee were kind of jockeying and then, so.
Oh, oh, thank you. Yeah, no, I just wanted to, obviously, I'm, I'm voicing my support for the changes you recommended. I had some, some thoughts about structure and format and it sounds like that'll be taken care of. So I'm, I'm totally confident with you, Mayor, and Councilmember Goddard being on that ad hoc working group to put that letter out and for you to sign it. I, I feel like if you all have those titles of school board liaison and the alternate, there's a reason why we appoint folks to those positions and it's for things like that, that where things are kind of sticky and there's interjurisdictional discussions to be had. So super confident with y'all being on it and also totally respect Councilmember Kohler's work. And I don't know if this letter is coming back to us or, or anything like that. But if it did, and of course, there are opportunities for other folks to chime in with their comments when that does, but I'm happy either way.
Thank you. Bruce?
Yeah, um, thank you. I would, it sounds like it's getting settled who's to be on the subcommittee and, and I'm okay with that. I think as far as the letter, it shouldn't come back to us. We should, go ahead and, you should go ahead and the two of you, go ahead and edit it and, and get it sent. But going forward, I'm just wondering whether maybe this is something like a, for, for a time, sort of an ad hoc, ongoing liaison subcommittee. I mean, you two are already the liaisons with the school board anyway, so I don't know if there's a need for that or not. But anyway, just encouraging you to come back to council with reports or any questions and ask for the rest of councils' support or input as this, as this continues. But I think it's a very important issue and I do understand the separation of jurisdictions, but it's clearly an important issue in Fairfax and I thank you for working on it.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay. So can I get a motion that, do we need a motion to support, to form the subcommittee?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, to form this subcommittee with the, with the mayor and Councilmember Goddard and for us to have the authority to make changes to this letter and bring back to the council any updates, relevant updates or questions or concerns back.
Yes, on that letter?
Pardon me?
Can we get CC'd on the letter?
Absolutely.
In general, quick question, is it a, a ad hoc subcommittee or ad hoc working group? What's the lingo?
Ad hoc subcommittee.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm happy to, to move that, Mayor Hellman.
Thank you.
Second.
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 Sorry, do you want me to do the roll call?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Kohler?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrone?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item 23, discuss possible amendments to Town Code Chapter 5.54, Just Cause Evictions, and provide direction to staff. Heather, I believe this is you.
Yeah, so you have in your packet both the current eviction control and then for Fairfax and then also starting Attachment B. There are 12 different items that were proposed as changes to eviction control. And so what I was hoping we could do tonight is to go through each of the 12 points and have the council give direction to staff whether you want to see these included in a revised, updated ordinance or not. And then if you have more details to work out, it may be that we should bring that back for further discussion before, you know, putting it through the legal review process. And so I, I could read those out for you or you could go through those, Mayor Hellman, just one by one, starting.
12 items?
There are 12 items, so there's right to return, and then the next one.
Yeah, I know, I, I know the 12 items, I'm very familiar. I didn't know if you were referring to that or the, all the ordinances that they impact.
Um, no, I think for our purposes today, it'd be helpful for staff, for you as a full council to give direction on these, each of these 12 items, and then we could bring back an ordinance.
Okay, any clarifying questions before we open to public comment? Councilmember Ackerman?
No, no questions. We'll have comments once we get to that point, yeah.
Okay, your hand is raised.
May I pardon?
Do you want me to lower your hand?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I will take care of that. I forgot.
Okay.
It's solved, that's silly. Okay.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Bruce. Okay, let's open the public comment, please.
Okay, so anyone wishing to comment on this item, raise your hand now, please. And, um, I'll start the timer. You have three minutes to make your comment. And if it's the same as the person before you, it'd be great if you just said that because I think we're going to get a lot of comments. Mayor, do you want to stick with three minutes per person?
I'm, I'm seeing about 15 hands right now.
Mm-hmm. So that's like 45 minutes?
Yeah, if everybody takes the max. If you are present to comment on Just Cause Eviction ordinance, please raise your hand.
Well. That might be tricky because they just raised their hands for public comment. I see.
I'm going to keep it at three minutes for now.
Okay. Okay, the first speaker is Susan Adams, followed by Mo McManus. And Susan, you're unmuted now. You may have to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. My name is Susan Adams. I reside at 47 Tamil Pious Road, Fairfax. First, I want to thank you for continuing to move this important matter forward. Second, I want to impress upon you the importance and urgency of swiftly adopting these measures that proposed today to you by providing a tangible example to friends of mine who have allowed me to describe their particular circumstances. My friend, a Marin County native, and her husband have resided in Fairfax for, their home for almost two decades. They are good tenants. My friend suffered a significant workplace injury a while ago that resulted in her having to leave her professional job permanently. Her husband has a disability and is over 62 years old, and I note those things because they're part of the, the proposed changes. Quite unexpectedly, recently, their landlord began preparing the property to sell. And immediately, my friend started a search for housing that would be affordable on their disability incomes, should a move be required. Their affordable housing options in Marin, none that fit their timeframe. Marin Housing Authority units, there are no units available. Marin Housing Authority's housing vouchers, which could expand the housing options that would fit their, their income level, have not been offered for at least 15 years. So there's not, that's not available. Last, EAH housing, which is another opportunity, there are no units available. And in, in order to even be eligible for the available units that could arise, you have to be in a waiting list for each unit that that might, would be an EAH unit. And they are now on several webs, waiting lists. But in fact, there's, the waiting list, as I'm told, is about three to five years for any unit. So that is certainly outside the timeframe for them. I just want to say that adoption of the proposed measures helps prevent displacement of our friends, family members, and neighbors from their homes through no fault of their own and thus would help protect the stability of our community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mo McManus, followed by Megan Maddock. And Mo, you're unmuted now.
Ah, can you hear me? Um, okay, uh, thank you, Town Council, for the opportunity to speak to you again this evening. I'm Maureen McManus. I am speaking as a member of California Alliance for Retired Americans, UFCW Local 5, and the DSA, who all are in support of rent control in Fairfax. I'm a retired senior who has rented in Fairfax for over 30 years. I work at Fairfax Market. I have said previously, I am lucky to be able to live and work in the town of Fairfax. My personal reasons for rent control have not changed since our last meeting. Uh, my five adult children, two at home still, two out of the state, and one in Southern California, all because they cannot afford Marin County, specifically Fairfax, housing. Fairfax Market is still having difficulties retaining employees, either local or otherwise. The $20 per hour union wage is good but unable to meet the high cost of rents and/or homeownership here in Fairfax. Renters here in town are seeking protections and security. We are requesting stronger Just Cause Eviction protections. Example, in my neighborhood, a duplex and a home with a rental unit went on the market, both sold quickly. Tenants in all four units were given notice. I'm sorry, two of the tenants were disabled, one was a senior, and a couple have lived in their home for over 30 years. All left Fairfax and Marin County because of the high cost of housing. Rent control and protections will enable seniors, disabled, family, and neighbors to stay in our community. Adding to, adding the proposed additions to strengthen the Fairfax Just Cause Eviction protection will be a few less worries for our rental community. The right to return, additional protections for seniors, disabled, terminally ill students, and educators, educators, just to name a few. Don't leave vulnerable renters at risk. Let's make Fairfax the model for other towns in Marin by adding stronger protections for our renters. Please, as a retired, working, senior renter, I strongly urge and encourage the town council to strengthen the existing Just Cause Eviction protections in Fairfax to reflect the proposed additions and changes found in the staff report using Marin's DSA model. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Megan Maddock, followed by Wendy. And Megan, you're unmuted now.
Hi there. My name is Megan. I'm a renter in Fairfax. I recently moved here nine months ago. I love it here. I hope to stay for a really long time. But when I moved into my apartment here, my deposit was $6,857. I've also paid about $3,000 in moving expenses, all the stuff that comes with moving, renting the van, moving the furniture. So close to $10,000 in moving expenses so far, and I'm not actually finished moving yet. So that's a lot of money for me. It's a lot of money for most working folks. I had two weeks to move out here for a job, so not enough time to save. And most of what I paid to move came out of my savings. And I think about what I would do if I had to leave my place now, if I had to leave my place soon, especially if it were no fault of my own. I don't have another ten thousand dollars. I couldn't do another security deposit, more moving expenses, without a lot more time to save. Honestly, the first thing I would consider would be to move back home. And unfortunately, that's not Fairfax, it's not Marin, the place that I like to be. So if we want to keep people here, if we want to make sure our neighbors don't move away, if they don't end up houseless, relocation expenses are a very reasonable renter protection, and it's one last thing folks would have to save for or worry about with everything that's on everyone's plate right now. So I urge you to please strengthen the just cause protections in Fairfax by reflecting all those proposed additions and changes, and in particular relocation expenses, using the Marin DSA model ordinance as a template. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Wendy, followed by Kurt Reese. And Wendy, you're unmuted now. You might have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Is that, is that working?
Yes.
Um, this is Wendy Botwin, and I used to live in Fairfax for eleven years. I'm disabled, and I was the inspiration to writing the original law. And I, unfortunately, had nowhere to go when I left. I had nowhere to go in Fairfax to stay there. And I just want to, and the law was inspired by my situation, and I deeply appreciate that it was passed, and I am in complete support of expanding it to provide even more protections to renters. Anything that you can do to make it stronger, I would strongly support. I know I'm not a Fairfax resident anymore, but this issue is still very important to me, and I still live in Marin County. So thank you for considering all of the changes.
The next speaker is Kurt, followed by Susan Malloy. And Kurt, you're unmuted now.
Good evening, Council. My name's Kurt Reese, and as I believe you all know, I'm a San Onofre renter and a co-chair of the Marin Democratic Socialists of America and our campaign to pass rent control in Marin, starting right here in Fairfax. I'll be speaking on behalf of Marin DSA tonight, and would appreciate the five minutes of time allowed to organizations, though I think I won't use it all. So first, I'd just like to really start by thanking the council and the town staff for moving forward with this process of both strengthening just cause eviction protections on the one hand, and establishing rent control in Fairfax. These two policies really work hand in hand to keep renters in their homes, and by tackling them both in a robust way, Fairfax is providing a model that the rest of the county, as well as smaller towns and cities across the state, can follow. Truly commendable. It is clear that the towns existing just cause eviction provisions, while a really good start, are simply inadequate to the task of truly protecting renters from being displaced. They provide no protections to tenants who are evicted due to no fault of their own. They leave children, seniors, people with disabilities, terminally ill people, and teachers and students during the school year, all needlessly at risk of eviction. And they leave open a number of loopholes that can easily be exploited by landlords to evade the intent of the law. So for context, the proposed additions and changes found in the staff report to strengthen the existing law are all very common provisions found in the vast majority of other California and Bay Area jurisdictions that have just cause eviction protections. Establishing a right of return, reasonable relocation payments, and additional protections for our most vulnerable neighbors are all ways to make sure that we're taking care of working families, young people, and seniors who rent their homes in Fairfax. They're all ways of affirming the basic principle that housing should be treated first and foremost as a basic human need and a social good, not an investment vehicle. So with this in mind, I would like to urge the council to adopt the full list of proposed additions and changes to strengthen Fairfax's just cause eviction protections found in Attachment B of the staff report, and to amend Chapter 5.54 of the Town Code to reflect these additions and changes. Furthermore, I'd like to reiterate to the council and staff that Attachment B is really just a summary of the just cause eviction section of the model ordinance that we provided to both staff and council on multiple occasions. And we hope and expect that the, the work of actually amending the existing Town Code would draw upon the details of that very comprehensive ordinance, so that Fairfax ends up with the strongest and most thorough just cause eviction protections possible. Our neighbors really deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Malloy, followed by Erica Milligan. And Susan, you're unmuted now.
Hello. You can hear me, I guess. My name, I, I wrote out my little speech here so that, that I could get it all in. My name is Susan Malloy, I'm a tenant at Bennett House in Fairfax since last October. I appreciate all that the town of Fairfax has done to protect tenants. I believe more can be done by adopting the recommendations of the DSO group. I'm fortunate now to be living in a rent subsidized senior building owned and managed by Mercy Housing, and I have no complaints about my tenancy. But I have come from a situation, housing situation, much more difficult than my present one. So I want to just describe that, and it wasn't in, in Fairfax, it wasn't in Marin County, but these issues are, are all over our Bay Area. And I, I lived in, in unincorporated Contra Costa County before I got into the building. Rents in basically in the Bay Area have about doubled in the last five to eight years. And incomes of working-class people and seniors just on social security have stayed pretty, you know, pretty stable, not, not going up, up at all. And I'm one of those people who, who just has social security income. And until I secured a unit in a Section Eight building, I was one rent increase from being on the street. There was no rent control or just cause eviction protections where I lived. I lived in a unit with serious health and safety issues. And I called legal services for seniors in the area to find out how I could get my landlord to provide heat, there's no heat, to remove mold, and to patch up the ceiling where twice dying bats fell through the ceiling into my kitchen. I was paying over eighty percent of my income in rent after two big rent increases in three years. Legal services for seniors said that I was likely to be evicted if I complained to code enforcement in the county, because the landlord could use the situation to claim that she needed to repair my unit. And they said the tenants rarely won their cases in court. This was a totally depressing situation for me. So I'm thankful for the tenant protections that we, that we preach, that we have, and for the work of nonprofit housing developers. And I urge the Town Council to adopt some of the recommendations to strengthen just cause evictions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, oh, sorry. Sorry, did you hear those beeps?
Yes, we did.
I will have to figure that out.
We're all awake.
Okay, good, me too. And so, the next speaker is Erica Milligan, followed by Lucy Hollingsworth. And Erica, you are unmuted now.
Thank you very much. My name is Erica, I am a homeowner in Fairfax over in Deer Park, and I do support strong just cause eviction protections, including the right to return and reasonable relocation. I support all the comments that come before me, and I wanted to just take a moment to read from the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness's report on the importance of housing affordability and stability, because I believe these just cause eviction requirements are important for housing stability. It says that "Housing is a core social determinant of personal health and well-being, and there's substantial evidence that housing stability is essential for people to address their challenges and pursue their goals. For example, a body of evidence indicates that when people, both adults and children alike, experience housing instability or homelessness, their prospects for future educational attainment, employment growth, health stability, and family presentation, preservation are significantly reduced." Later on, it says "The impact of stable housing on children and youth is well documented", including that "Without stable housing, young people are more vulnerable to mental health problems, developmental delays, and poor cognitive outcomes. Further, there's a correlation between housing instability and trauma, which can negatively impact future success. Educational outcomes for children are also improved with housing stability. Young people in stable housing are less likely to repeat a grade and less likely to drop out of school. Ultimately, the lack of stable housing has long-lasting effects that can impact health, education, and employment throughout people's lives and future, future generations." And as a mom of a, of a, you know, eighteen-year-old who's going to be graduating high school, you know, I think about all of that, I think about my son's ability to launch, to, to get housing, to be able to maintain housing, and to succeed in life. And in our current political and economic climate, I think it's really important for us to look to home, look to what we can do here. I think access to education, access to housing, stable housing are incredibly important things, and, and I urge you to help us get there. Thank you, thank you for doing this work, thank you for being on the council and for listening to this, and thank you for making an impact where we can.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lucy Hollingsworth, followed by Mattie Hirschfield. And Lucy, you're unmuted now.
Hi, I'm Lucy Hollingsworth, an attorney with Legal Aid of Marin, which is also a member institution of the Marin Organizing Committee. Once again, the town of Fairfax is at the forefront of taking bold actions to protect low-income renters. We represent low-income tenants, predominantly seniors, persons with disabilities, and communities of color who face impending displacement as Marin continues to lose naturally occurring affordable housing. Long-term tenants, when forced out through no fault of their own, face a drastically changed rental market, with rents two to three times higher than what they had previously paid, and very little inventory. While we might be able to buy them a little time, most of our clients are forced to move out of the community, out of Marin, and some even to their cars in homelessness. No-fault just cause evictions are often used and abused by owners to remove long-term tenants so that rents can be increased to market rate. Strengthening no-fault just causes for evictions through higher relocation payments, longer eviction notice periods, a right for a tenant to return, and other recommended anti-displacement policies are critical to a housing element that complies with state law and also gives Fairfax tenants what they deserve, the right to safe and affordable housing in their community. Thank you for your leadership in considering these measures. Tenant advocates look forward to a Fairfax just cause ordinance that other communities in Marin can model. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mattie Hirschfield, followed by Joe McGary. Mattie, you're unmuted now.
Good evening, Mayor Helman and Vice Mayor Cuttrono, thanks for bringing up this issue. My name is Mattie Hirschfield, I'm the political director with the North Bay Labor Council. We cover Sonoma, Marin, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. The comments tonight are exceptionally good. The commenter, two people before me kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but I just wanted to support what you're doing here and what, what those from this group are asking you to do. Some of the issues, I'm just going to repeat some of this. Rent control has been shown to reduce crime by keeping neighborhoods intact and reducing frequent rent or turnover. Rent control boosts local schools by enabling consistent student attendance year-round. It improves public health by avoiding stress and poor health related to repeated moving and rent stress. And it supports local business, which are patronized by longer-term residents who have money to spend on goods and services and not just for rent. And just cause simply provides renters with a right to due process. So as you've heard tonight, special needs, you know, low-wage workers, the elderly, the disabled, really need, need this. So I'm, I'm hoping that you will see this through, and it looks like I have a lot more time, but I know that's wrong. So, but thank you, thank you for taking this up, and thank you for, for listening to my comments.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Joe McGary, followed by Kyle Amsler. And Joe, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening again, Council. Yeah, I just want to start by, by expressing my gratitude for the large amount of time and energy that, that's being put forward by you all and by staff to increase renters' protections in Fairfax. I'm a renter here, and I, and I greatly appreciate it. Tonight, I'd like to speak in favor of the town of Fairfax strengthening its just cause eviction protections. The existing just cause ordinance was a good start, but here, as we find ourselves in 2022, there is now need to do more to protect those who rent in Fairfax. Particularly folks who are displaced due to no fault of their own deserve stronger protections. They deserve the right of return to their homes at the same amount of rent if it is put back on the market by their landlord or a successor landlord. They deserve reasonable relocation payments so that they can quickly find adequate housing. And those people with disabilities are seniors, the, the children of Fairfax, those who devote their life to teaching, and, and the, the students of our schools. Those groups require specific protections. Yeah, as a, as a council, you're blazing the trail of true renters protections in Marin. It is incumbent on you, because you've stepped into this work first, to make the protections robust and comprehensive. What you create here will end up protecting renters throughout the county, from Nevada to the canal to Marin City. Capitalism continues to wage a war on the poor in America, and, and that, that includes the poor here in Fairfax. Strengthening just cause evictions, eviction protections in Fairfax, focusing on the twelve amendments provided by the Marin DSA in Attachment B, would literally provide some shelter from this bombardment on the working class by taking a huge step to guarantee housing is a human right for everyone in Marin. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kyle Amsler, followed by Judy Schreidman. And Kyle, you're unmuted now.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Kyle Marie Amsler, I'm a San Onofre renter, a volunteer with Marin DSA and our campaign to pass rent control in Marin, starting in Fairfax. I just wanted to start by sharing some exciting progress on our campaign and the progress we continue to make as we talk to local residents about the need for greater renter protections in Marin. So far, we've collected over two thousand two hundred petition signatures county-wide in support of rent control and just cause eviction protections. And in Fairfax specifically, we have now collected over six hundred petition signatures from local residents, which is about eight percent of the town's population, calling for rent control, and importantly, for tonight's discussion, for just cause eviction protections that, and I'm quoting the petition here, "Prevent arbitrary evictions, keep students and teachers in their homes, and protect renters who are evicted due to no fault of their own." So while the existing just cause eviction protections lay a solid foundation against arbitrary eviction, they do not protect renters who are displaced due to no fault of their own, and they provide no additional protections for teachers, students, seniors, children, people with disabilities, or the terminally ill. Professionally, I work with terminally ill children throughout Marin. My mom was terminally ill when I was a child, so I speak from professional and personal experience when I say when you are going through that as a family, the last thing you want to worry about is losing your housing, especially with how high medical care bills are. So adopting the proposed additions and changes found in Attachment B of tonight's staff report and using the model ordinance that we've provided to revise the existing Town Code would put Fairfax on the leading edge of protecting renters in Marin. It would also be responding to the overwhelming public support we've received from local Fairfax residents who are hungry for this change, I think as you can see tonight from the comments as well. I urge you to amend the existing just cause eviction protections to reflect the proposed changes and additions found in the staff report, to use our model ordinance, which we have already provided to council and staff as a guide. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Judy Schreidman, followed by Ellen. And Judy, you are unmuted now.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Judy Schreidman, and I'm here this evening representing the Sierra Club. We are in strong support of Fairfax strengthening its just cause eviction protections. Once again, Fairfax has the opportunity to demonstrate leadership in an environmental injustice issue of importance to the Sierra Club. We know that other towns and cities and even the county itself will look to your leadership and vision so that what you do will have far reaching impact throughout Marin and beyond. Even a threatened eviction threat terrorizes people. Eviction notices totally disrupt and upend people's lives when they suddenly find out that they have to leave their homes and find somewhere else to live, no matter what else is going on in their lives. While we maybe can't prevent evictions, we can at least make sure that they're just and that we take reasonable measures to reduce the stress and harm they cause to people's lives. Certainly relocation payments are among the basic protections for renters when they're evicted due to no fault of their own. Although the proposed, the proposed relocation payments may seem large and the abstract, when you add up all the costs necessitated by relocation, including packing and moving expenses, first and last month's rent and security deposits, the proposed payments are quite reasonable. In a 2022 survey, the Economic Security Project found that forty nine percent of Americans were ill equipped to cover even a $400 emergency expense. And you just heard about a $10,000 moving expense. So imagine not being able to cover $400. You know that the people who can't afford this are disproportionately renters. In fact, seventy one percent of Fairfax renters are low income, very low income, or extremely low income, seventy one percent. We also know that renters are disproportionately BIPOC. So relocation payments are yet another racial justice issue. The reality is that an eviction without reasonable relocation payments far too often leads to homelessness. Finally, I find it telling to see the number of other jurisdictions who have already made relocation payments. This is an idea whose time has come. Alameda, Oakland, Richmond, LA, Santa Monica, and West Hollywood already have codified similar payments to those being proposed for Fairfax. Sierra Club implores you to lead the way in Marin on this important issue of just cause eviction protections. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ellen, followed by Alison Hamburg. And Ellen, you are unmuted now.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm under the weather today, so I'm just going to go with, that I agree with the sentiments of most of the other speakers saying that we need to have stronger no cause evictions protections in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you. And I hope you feel better. The next speaker is Alison Hamburg, followed by Kelly Newman. Wait, did I just? Okay, you're unmuted now, Alison.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to hear our comments. I am a former Fairfax renter, speaking in support of increasing the just cause protections. Earlier in the year, our landlord attempted to evict us because she did not know about the just cause ordinance. When she eventually realized she could not evict us with no cause, we received a retaliatory rent increase instead. So even though technically we were not evicted, and we know that we have legal recourse, the damage was done. We knew she wanted us to leave, so we didn't feel like we could stay. And we were not able to find other housing in Fairfax. And so I'm speaking out in support of tenants who are displaced due to no fault of their own and urging Fairfax to strengthen the just cause protections to reflect the proposed additions and changes found in the staff report, including the right to return to units if it gets put back on the market and reasonable relocation payments. I hope that Fairfax will be a leader in this sense, protecting children, seniors, people with disabilities, people with illnesses who are at risk of eviction. So thank you so much for hearing our comments again and for considering and for this opportunity to be a leader. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kelly Newman, followed by PJ Pfeffer. And Kelly, you are unmuted now. Kelly, you may have to unmute yourself. Okay. The next speaker is PJ Pfeffer. And you are unmuted now.
Thank you. I won't take up too much time. I want to lend my voice in support of everybody else who has spoken in favor of just cause evictions and also want to reiterate that it's my opinion that this is an eminently reasonable ask and, and I think it could have a great impact in, in assisting Fairfax renters. And although it's a great first step, I, I also would support continuing to do more work following DSA's guidance, specifically with respect to strengthening the protections and penalties in the event of self-help evictions or landlords who engage in retaliatory behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you. I see, Kelly, you want to try again, so I'm going to unmute you. And see if you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, hi, sorry. Okay, so it's no secret that Fairfax is a lot like the way Marin used to be still. And there's no reason that Fairfax can't be the leader on this issue, which is a global problem where rents are insane. And I don't know what's going on. Are there that many more rich people? I don't know. But there are certain cities that have like certain measures that have affordable housing, like Measure O, Measure J, and that's going to require certain types of taxation and a long term effort of development that's going to help with, you know, more affordable housing. Coincidentally, I was told two days ago, my owners are, of my house that I'm running in ADU, are selling their house and I have to move. So it's a lot of money to move. It's hard to find somewhere decent. And I don't have any, there's no real, there's no real recourse for me to take. And I'm, I'm going to have a hard time finding a place because they're moving into, they're elderly and they're nice people and everything. It's just the way it's set up. There's not, it's not set up for people unless they're landed gentry or in a, or they're married. I'm a teacher. I'm a single teacher. So it's going to be a big, big problem for me. And if there's some kind of protection for people to have some kind of relocation assistance, you know, they don't have to break the bank or something, but I feel like there's no reason that we here in Fairfax can't really, you know, be a good example. Because, and even I, I think that the whole thing with even the, you know, the rents are too expensive for businesses too. And, you know, it's how, how, how long can we keep this up? And I think that the whole thing about homeless people or people with RVs are kind of like the Ubers of the real estate market, right? There's like, well, I'm just going to live here, you know, and stay here. And I don't want it to have to get like that in a really great place like Fairfax. So thank you for having this meeting and remember, every person matters. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael McIntosh, followed by Malcolm. And Michael, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Counsel, I'm glad to see you all here. Speaking in opposition to this is certainly a very unpopular point of view, but it's something to be considered. So starting with myself, and I may speak five minutes, but I hope you find these comments interesting. What we're talking about is rents are absolutely unaffordable, and I agree with that. But those, that failure of our rents is really a failure of our society and our political administration to come up with policies that are more equitable for everybody. So here we have somebody speaking earlier that their medical expenses were so high that it compromised their ability to pay rent. But you're asking one section of the market, the people that have rentals, to absorb this cost instead of saying, well, wait a minute. Maybe the doctors should lower the rates. Maybe all four or four of you that have homes, maybe you should pass on the appreciation of your home and you sell it. Because you really are asking one section of the market to try to fix the bills of our society. For myself specifically, and it's something I hope that you find interesting, I do have long term tenants here. And so for instance, even as of today's date, I have one studio and I pay the utilities that I only charge $1,265. I have one two bedroom that I only charge $1,495. If I go back to 2004, my property tax was $77,707. My utilities in water, garbage, gas, and electricity was $39,054. Bring this up to 2021, my property tax is $142,000. And those same utilities have almost gone, gone over three times to $106,377. So you look at these things and Fairfax could do something if they wanted to. They could, for instance, buy my property, buy the wall property, buy the Spole Street Plaza, and really do something for the community. But pushing this onto one person or one section of the market that we don't all participate in is really the thing that you stand for, equity, unfairness, progressiveness. All those things are failing with saying, aha, we're going to beat on one person because we don't like them. And then one person isn't just me, but just somebody that has a piece of property. So it's really a cool way to look at it. The other thing in looking at this specific language, and I do apologize not to have a more formal thing to read to you. Today was very busy. But the proposed changes to the ordinance are completely unworkable and will present an administration burden that's probably not recognized by the manager. Unless the town requires all rental units to be registered on their location type of unit tenant profile rent, this database would need to be created and kept up to date, again at whose cost? Depending on the number of units, this could be a huge undertaking. And is the reporting conversion to an owner occupied or changing tenant on the honor system? I do applaud you for truly bringing forth something that needs to be discussed. I have no argument there. But asking one part of society to pay for the bills that have been brought about by our government is not right. And I'll finish this with one thing. We're all talking about this rent control that, again, I say is needed, but maybe not as presented. But what are we doing? We're running away from the cities that have rent control, San Francisco, Alameda, Oakland. They have all been discussed because they have rent controls. Look at what's happened to them. People don't want to live there. They're coming here. New York has more Airbnb units than they have available units for rent because people are trying to avoid all these cumbersome laws. So I hope you'll take into your consideration some of those things that maybe we need to have a community participation and really have a bigger conversation where we can all sit in person and draft something that's workable and sustainable for the future and doesn't ruin Fairfax to make it the big cities we don't want to be because all the small landlords, myself included, will be forced to sell out to the bigger landlords with no competition. Thank you.
The next speaker is Malcolm, followed by Lethal Blash. And Malcolm, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and I do appreciate the council itself for putting, pulling all this together and creating a space for these issues to be heard. I'm an eighty three year old resident of Fairfax. I've been here a long time. I happen to also be disabled and I am a renter. I wish to speak to the issue of urgency. I have, with great appreciation, heard so many people justify and support the ideas that are presented in this, in this, in this edition. And, and I, I just want to point out that I included people from Legal Aid, from people from the unions, representative from a teacher, Marin DSA, a homeowner even spoke in favor of it. And my, my response to the gentleman who just spoke is to remember that the primary point of, of real estate is not to provide income for this, for the people who can purchase it and rent it. It's to provide basic social stability. So I, I'm, I'm again eighty three years old. I'm appreciating all that's happening and I'm also advocating urgency. Please do something about this and accept it quickly. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lethal Blash, and you're unmuted now.
Hi, so I'm Lethal Blash. I'm also a homeowner, although I was a renter in a rent controlled apartment for about twenty five years. I live in a neighborhood in Fairfax with a lot of renters and people have expressed to me on numerous occasions their fears of losing their current home due to rising rents and/or displacement by eviction. So I'm like really amazed tonight and grateful to hear so many renters speaking out because that hasn't happened in the past. And I think that's a testament both to the work of the DSA, but also to the work of the town, which has done a lot of work on tenants' rights in the past. And I think it's made people feel a little bit more comfortable about speaking up. Years ago, when I lived in San Francisco, a friend described the light and smell of late summer in Fairfax and West Marin with great fondness and nostalgia. She currently resides in Sonoma. I asked her why she moved if she loved it so much and she decided and said, we were renters. Once you lose a place, you have to leave. There aren't a lot of options. And since I've moved here, I've heard so many stories from former residents of this area, many who were raised here but had to leave because their families could not afford to stay. So we talk a lot about town character, usually in the context of the buildings or trees. And I'm glad we're having this conversation about the type of people who can live in those structures. Renders make up so many of our local workers, musicians, artists, and a lot are seniors who have contributed so much to our community and are now on a fixed income that generally cannot flex with the crazy inflation that we're experiencing right now and rising rents. So I'm just hearing in particular so many sad stories about older adults who end up having to move with very little resources when say somebody purchases their building or something happens and suddenly they're really close to being out on the street. So while we hear calls for building much more housing as a solution to the rental housing crisis that we're facing in Marin and indeed across the country, I feel like Fairfax and Marin in general is unlikely to build the type or amount of housing needed to fill this gap anytime soon. You know, there just isn't enough affordable housing available for those who need it. And I think one prior speaker from Bennett House made this point very clear. We need a multi-pronged approach to address the rental housing crisis that does not rely solely on new construction or on nonprofit developers. I really feel like people need some key rights over the place they call home. And we also do need to be looking at how we also allow property owners a fair rate of return as well, so we can keep them in our community. But I think that housing justice and in fact, just even any housing element, you know, we kind of look at the three Ps. It requires more than production. It requires renter protections and also affordable housing preservation. I'd also be really interested in hearing a lot more about the data that would be kept on the various rental initiatives that this town is thinking of adopting. Because I think that if we are able to really track these things and keep good data, we can really fine tune them and decide to keep or discard them when we have real evidence about how they're working. So I would fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that. I see no more raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Do you want to close the public comment?
Yes, I'll close the public comment. Thank you all for your comments. Okay. Oh, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering for this next portion, if, to keep it orderly, do we, do you expect us to go one by one through the proposed additions and additions and changes for strengthening the just cause ordinance? Or do we say, you know, is that, do you think that's probably the cleanest way to go about it?
Yeah, that was, that was what I was about to recommend, is to go through. Yeah, that was, that was what I was about to recommend, is to go through one through 12 and capture comments and so forth.
Excellent.
Anyone have an alternative suggestion? Okay. So with that, I look for the, for the public, I believe this is Attachment B. So these are the potential amendments, proposed additions and changes to strengthen Fairfax's Just Cause eviction protections. So item number one on that list, Barbara, you have your hand up already. Did you anticipate commenting on number one?
If you want to do one by one, but I'm prepared to go through them all. And my list could be just my list, if you want, but if you want to go one by one.
No, I want to go one by one.
Okay.
Okay, one, number one, right of return. So tenants who are displaced.
I'll go first.
Pardon me?
I'll go first.
I'm going to read, I'm going to read for the sake of the public. I'm going to read it, and then we'll open it up for to the council. Thank you. Number one is the right of return. Tenants who are displaced due to no-fault terminations, i.e. removal from the rental market, owner move-in, or substantial rehabilitation or major repairs, have the right to return to the unit if it should ever be returned to the market by the landlord or successor landlord. The return tenancy shall include the same terms as the original tenancy, and the rent shall be the rent lawfully paid by the tenant at the time the landlord served the termination notice. If the tenant declines to reoccupy the unit after it is returned to the rental market, the lawful base for, the lawful base rent for the new tenancy shall be the rent lawfully paid by the former tenant at the time the landlord served the termination notice, plus any lawful adjustment under the Fairfax Rent Stabilization Ordinance. Barbara, you had a comment on that one?
Yeah, I just want to mention one thing. I've been a renter most of my life from a kid through middle age, late middle age. And so I, I can really feel for renters, having been one for many years. I also brought the early renter protections to Fairfax and also was part of the group that brought things to the county. So I'm very supportive, but I have some kind of compromise suggestions. So with the right of return, I agree with the concept of right of return for the renter who was evicted for a no-fault move-in. However, it's not reasonable to necessarily expect to, the rent to remain exactly the same. And if you look back at our Just Cause eviction for no fault, a move-in requires that the person who moved in has to live there at least a year. So that means if there's a right of return after that person has lived there at least a year, I suggest that the rent could be capped at no more than 5% after the year passed, or if two years, 5 plus 5%, and so on. But if there was a substantial remodel or rehab for health and safety reasons, I think the landlord should be able to charge additional reasonable costs to recoup the losses. And the other piece of this, if the tenant doesn't want to return, I don't think there should be restrictions on how much the rent is for the next person to move in. I think the renter, right of return, in my view, is for the person who was evicted for the no-fault move-in. Thank you.
Bruce?
I'll weigh in on that. I, I agree with a lot of what Barbara said. Definitely agree with the concept. This is a fundamental, a fundamental part of what we're looking at here. Consider a scenario in which a landlord wants to get rid of a tenant and says they're going to do some improvements. That's what we're trying to, I think, prevent, or what we would try to prevent. What I'd like to see us try to prevent is that kind of subterfuge in a way. But on the other hand, if the landlord is really making substantial improvements, that's probably a good thing because there's some pretty rocky rental stock out there. So I think I would, I would basically agree with what Barbara says. The question, and I don't have an answer for this, is, is how you determine the difference between a real substantial improvement and a sort of not very much improvement, like painting the walls or something. But I, I think the, I definitely agree with the concept of the right of return. And I, I think we should keep that in, in place. And the 5% per year possible increase seems fair in, in terms of the fact that our current rent control or the rent control ordinance that we're working on in parallel with this also talks about that kind of a limit. So, yeah, I basically agree with Barbara on this, number one.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the, the comments that were brought up as it relates to number one and substantial rehabilitation for, for health and safety purposes are sort of jumping around a little bit because that's actually number nine on the list as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge that because that'll probably come up again. But generally speaking, I am in support of number one. And I think it is prudent to think about the future costs related to, you know, letting, having someone leave, jacking up the price. If, if we're removing sta, like, stable housing, low-cost housing for the next renter, I think slowly we will be moving away from having affordable units. So we should just be really mindful of any attempt to, you know, create, create space for rent increases as people cycle through some of these units. So I, I'm kind of, I have some reservations about some of the suggestions you've made, Councilmember Kohler. I, I think I am interested in, in better understanding whether or not, what would constitute a reasonable increase in terms of rehabilitation work? But I'm also concerned that some of that work, which is supposed to be accounted for in the rent that people are already paying, and in terms of maintenance and upkeep, it shouldn't fall on the renter to face the, the cost of maintaining the building beyond, you know, what their rent is. And that's kind of the cost of doing business for the landlord. So I, I need some more specifics on that. But, um, yeah, I, I'm in support of number one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also in support. I, I, I kept coming back to sort of an administrative question here, and that is, so in the second paragraph, it says, if the tenant declines to reoccupy the unit. So I'm, I'm unclear about, you know, and I'm, I'm not asking to go into the sort of the process or the steps taken in order to connect with that former tenant. But, but I, I want to, you know, be cognizant that there is an administrative task in determining, has that person been contacted? You know, how, how, what are the, what are the procedures for determining whether that former tenant is interested in order to even offer them the right of return? So I, I'm just sort of keeping track of any administrative tasks that are added by any of the things that we, that we add. But I am in support of the right of return, the way it's written in this, in this first point.
As am I. Thank you. Okay, moving on to number two. Additional eviction protections for elderly, disabled, or terminally ill tenants. A landlord may not evict a tenant due to a no-fault owner move if, one, the tenant has resided in the rental unit for at least three years and is either at least 62 years of age or disabled. Or two, if the tenant is certified as being terminally ill by the tenant's treating physician. A landlord may evict a tenant who qualifies for the exemption if the landlord or enumerated relative who will occupy the rental unit is also disabled, and no other units are available at the property.
May, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I should have asked prior to the public comment, but I, I, and this is a very basic question, but I have had trouble trying to understand a very fundamental issue. And that is, when we are looking at all of these protections, can you please explain, and this may be Janet, so this only pertains to folks who are tenants during the term of their lease? Is, is that correct?
Yes, it does, but let's say you have a lease and it's not renewed. It goes from month to month, and then you're still covered. If the landlord wants to offer you a new lease, you can, you always have the right to reject that, and then you have to leave. If you don't like the terms of it. But it does cover, so if you have a lease, let's say for a year, and you, it, it wasn't renewed, it would default automatically to month to month, and you're covered under that, under this, our current existing Just Cause Ordinance. You know what I'm saying? You have a look on your face that says you don't.
Yeah, I, I feel as though missing something that we really need to clarify before we go further is, so if, if there is a one-year lease signed between a tenant and a landlord, these protections would provide the, the protection as, as described, as written during the term of that lease, correct?
Correct.
And should the landlord not choose to renew the lease after the term has expired, are any of these protections, do they preclude that from taking place? Or where do they preclude that from taking place?
Barbara, are you going to say something or? No, okay. So what happens is the lease expires and it defaults to month to month, and you're still covered. Right? You're covered because you have a month-to-month tenancy.
And that's automatic.
By the Just Cause Ordinance. Right? So if you're not offered a new lease, you automatically default to month to month, meaning you're still covered. So if they wanted you to leave, you'd have to have, they would have to have a no-fault reason for terminating you.
Okay, so it's an automatic default to month to month, and the tenant remains covered unless one of these. Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that I had that clear. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you. Barbara, your hand was up. Are you, okay, it is.
Yeah, okay, so I agree with not allowing eviction if a person is terminally ill for one year or if they're severely disabled for one year. I think we have to let people get out of the rental market if they want to get out of the rental market. I mean, there's some sort of perception out there that we have a bunch of hedge funds or greedy property managers renting all these units. There are people who don't want to stay in the rental market. So I would say one year for severely disabled or or terminally ill, and then I'm not sure how this would work, but some idea that the landlord could assist in finding a new rental after that year. I don't agree with just a standard 62 or older or just disabled. Disabled can have a pretty broad definition of what that is. And so I would like to keep it to the two conditions I mentioned. Thank you.
Any other comments? Barbara, just so I'm.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm done. I'm sorry.
You're not done?
No, I am done. I doubt I was writing my notes.
You're, I just want to make sure I captured in the, you want to swap out three years for one year for dis, for disabled or terminally ill or both?
Okay, um, I don't see, there's no three-year cap on this.
No, it's just, it's not a cap.
Saying that the landlord can never evict anybody if they're disabled or terminally ill. And what I'm saying is you can't evict them for one year. And I'm calling, saying for both severely disabled or terminally ill for one year, and not including just the broader 62 and older. I mean, I'm 70.
Okay, I, I misunderstood. I thought you wanted to change this three-year.
Yeah, the three years, just that somebody resided there for three years.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry for the confusion.
No problem. Does anybody have any comments? Go ahead, Bruce. You might be on mute, Bruce. You are.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, it's, I think what Barbara just suggested is probably as good as I could come up with. But I, I know we're going through these one at a time, but I just want to step back for a minute to kind of a general principle that makes this difficult for me all the way through, which is, it's absolutely clearly, I agree with, with some of the commenters. I, I, Joe McGary said it, well, the capitalism just really screws people who don't have a lot of money. That's kind of the definition of it almost. But there's no question we have a problem. But, and there's no question that I would love to see the directions that these, all of these, all these options are pointing in, which is to help people who are really suffering because they're not on the top of the economic ladder. They aren't among those of us, and I've said before in this council, that those of us who are lucky enough that we got in early and are, you know, relatively stable in terms of our housing. Those who are not, it's really painful to see what goes on. But on the other side, there's, I guess I would call it, and I, this term I know is used on the right wing, and I'm not trying to join with any previous comments on, by others using this term. But the term of unintended consequences, that we drive people out of the rental market, or we cause people to feel like they need to raise their rent, even though maybe at this time, and we do have renters in this town who are, who charge a very reasonable rent and are, and are, you know, one of them spoke at this tonight, charge at a reasonable rent and, and seem to be stable in doing that. We don't want to cause everybody to have to raise their rent because they see that they could have huge expenses or be put in a, in a position that they can't get out of due to the restrictions that we put down. So that's the other side of it for me. I just wanted to make that general statement before, as we go through these one by one, that that's kind of where, where the rub is for me, is not causing a situation in which we, we drive things in the wrong direction by scaring people who want to rent to where they, to want to, to, to offer a place for rent to where they are afraid to do it in Fairfax. But with that, as far as item two, I think what Barbara said is as good a compromise as I can see. I also liked, liked what Liesel, I believe, mentioned, which was that some kind of data, as we go forward as to how this is working, as we make these changes, would be really valuable. I'm not sure how we could get that because we're talking a lot more staff time to do that. But all of this is talking about more staff time. And I think all of this is, there's a hope behind this that other jurisdictions in the county or the county itself might follow suit in some ways. And that might lead to more of a. more of a possibility of collecting some information as to how what the effect these are having, but you know, as we put out social changes, it's really important to watch and see what effect they have and make sure they have the desired effect. So, sorry if that was vague. I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. I just want to provide a counterweight just to acknowledge that the folks that we're talking about in the next two are some of the most like vulnerable folks in Fairfax and essentially what we're trying to figure out here is how to make sure that the folks that have lived and worked in Fairfax are not just left out on their own just because they've aged out of their their usefulness in terms of working or, you know, they they can't provide the same sort of you know, opportunity, I guess, with it with their labor, if they're disabled or if they're chronically ill or terminally ill. And so I'm really trying to see the like balance of that's being proposed here, but I, you know, if somebody's turning sixty-two, they've worked their whole life, they're expecting to be on fixed income for the remainder of their life and, you know, I think that I'm I'm sensitive to that. I'm definitely sensitive to the variety of disabilities, like I'm not going to sit up here and say you're not disabled enough and so I'm cutting you out of this. I think we have to be really careful about how we do that. So I I don't want to necessarily tinker with this too much. I mean, if there's a I think the social security idea in terms of why sixty-two was chosen as the age makes a lot of sense. I'm I'm open to an alternative number if it's based in some some sort of reasonable or rational grounding or foundation, but on the disabled front, on the terminally ill front, I I'm I'm supportive of number two and I I am sensitive to even to the sixty-two, even till the to the elderly piece, because we really are talking about folks who, if they are served with an eviction at at no fault of their own, then they really are out of our community. They might be out of Marin. They might be part of the statistic where through the pandemic, we've seen a doubling of people living in their vehicles in Marin County. So I I'm I'm sensitive to to those considerations and I I think I'm I'm in alignment with stronger protections for our most vulnerable as opposed to trying to water it down a little bit.
I think that was really real well said and I support number two.
As do I and I just want to acknowledge and appreciate all the comments thus far and I guess where I am coming from is this, these weren't developed for Fairfax. These are considered best practices from jurisdictions that have this in place across the state. So I just wanted to remind us of that and also from the you know, the twenty-twenty-one Housing Needs Data Report for Fairfax, twenty-four percent of Fairfax rental households are low income, twelve percent are very low income and thirty-six percent are extremely low income. So seventy-two percent are financially vulnerable, essentially living month to month. So I just wanted to anchor us in that in that data as we proceed. Thank you. Okay, moving on to number three, additional school year eviction protections for educators and students. A landlord may not evict a tenant due to a no-fault owner move if a child under the age of eighteen or any educator resides in the unit. The child or educator is a tenant in the unit or the child has a custodial or family relationship with a tenant in the unit. The tenant has resided in the unit for twelve months or more and the expiration date of the notice of termination of tenancy falls during the school year. Go ahead, Barbara.
I guess I'll be first and unpopular. Okay. So I would I would change this somewhat of a compromise and say a hundred and twenty days notice and limit to the school year only rather than forever, which is what I'm reading this to be. So that's my comment. Thank you.
What did you say, a hundred and twenty days?
Hundred and twenty days notice and limit the the no move out to the school year only.
Thanks.
Well, how isn't there another clause that has the the notice date?
That's the Ellis Act. Next one.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, any other comments besides Barbara's?
Mayor, I just have one, one
Okay.
comment. And actually, I think there was a speaker named Kelly that made me think of this. But a couple speakers, honestly, just the given the the rental market in Marin and in the Ross Valley, you know, even if it's the end of the school year for a teacher, which is might not even be the end of of their work and, you know, and efforts to supplement their income with with summer work that they might be doing with the school depending on what grade they're teaching, et cetera, et cetera, but you know, they still might be unfortunately unable to continue to create the stability or or remain at that school if it happens to be that they're evicted, even at the end of the year, at the end of the school year or something like that. So I'm, I wasn't sure Barbara, or Councilmember Kohler, if your comments were about teachers and students or, you know, families with students are just writ large, but we might also be running into the issue of, okay, it's the end of the school year and now it's okay to evict the the local teacher that's single and and trying to get by as a teacher and all of a sudden we have teachers that can no longer remain at that school when we know that teachers can be fixtures that are
Teachers have contracts on an annual basis. And I'm, you know, I don't want to sound heartless here, but I'm also trying to think of the landlords. And what we tend to hear is people who want these things speak out. And Mr. McIntosh was the only one who voiced some opposition. I'm trying to propose compromises that would be helpful for landlords, but also sensitive to the needs of people living in those units. So I understand what you're saying and I'm not heartless, but I also think we're going to be potentially driving people out of the rental market. And, you know, there's, there's two sides to this coin. So that's all I'm saying, you know, if you don't agree with me, that's okay. But I think we have to also think about the landlords, you know, have to have, these are no-fault move-ins. So I realize there's been some abuse on the no-fault move-in, but if you look back at our just cause eviction, that's where somebody wants to move their grandmother in or their daughter or they want to, they need to do a substantial rehab, whatever that means for health and safety standards, or they're going to remove it from the rental market. So I mean, you know, I just want to just add this. A lot of our landlords in Fairfax are people who may have bought these properties a long time ago. They're using this as part of their income. A lot of these folks may be on social security and they're supplementing their income. So you know, that that's all I'm going to say is that we need to have a little bit of a balance and that's all I'm trying to propose.
I totally appreciate that and I'm I'm sure my colleagues did this too. I spoke, I I made it a point to hear from the the other side as you, as you say, or the other side of the coin. So, thank you, Barbara. I appreciate your comments and your perspective. Do we have any other comments on this one?
I just, I'm just in support of of number three and and thank Councilmember Kohler for the suggestions, but I'm I'm in support of three as it stands.
Okay, as am I. And Renee?
Yeah, I am in support. I I really appreciate Barbara, all that you're bringing forward and I do believe in compromise. I just painstakingly thought through all of these things. This is not easy. And granted, we have not heard from any landlords. So I have a suggestion about that at the end of this, but I do support everything that's been brought before us so far.
Thank you. And Bruce? Where are you on number three?
I I don't have anything to add to the discussion at this point.
Are you as is or are you with Barbara's suggestion?
Well.
I need to know.
I would lean toward Barbara's suggestion, yeah, yeah. But and for the reasons as she stated, again, that's just, as I said before, that's one concern with this is that it has the unintended consequence of removing
Got it.
market.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, moving on to number four, Ellis Act withdrawal protections. If a landlord seeks in good faith to recover possession of all rental units on a parcel of land to permanently withdraw them from the rental market or for demolition under the Ellis Act, then they must provide a hundred and twenty days notice of withdrawal to all tenants. If a tenant is sixty-two years or older or disabled and has lived in their rental unit for at least one year, the landlord must provide one year notice of withdrawal. The landlord cannot change the terms of the lease during this period. Go ahead, Bruce.
Well, I'll take a turn going first. I would support this with, I would prefer to see six months notice of withdrawal instead of one year. And otherwise I would support this as it is.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I want to also support number four and just acknowledge that some of the these notices and the and the timelines that we're giving the folks, I think, address some of the the points that were made earlier, which might might be the result as we move through this, that some things speak to each other. And so when we're talking about notices and the first couple, we are seeing notices being brought up here. So I'm supportive of that as well. And I think the a year for, or six months, I should say, for somebody who might be living paycheck to paycheck in order to save up a little bit, you know, that that might not be enough amount, enough time. But I think a year should should be enough time and and that feels like a prudent approach.
I I concur. I I think in this situation, if someone's going to recover possession of all the units or withdraw them permanently, then they've thought about this for some time, an adequate amount of time to give people that year for many of the reasons that Vice Mayor Catrano just just stated.
I agree. Barbara, you have your hand up?
Yeah, again, unpopular, but I guess that's what I do well. I would say limit to a hundred and twenty days notice and six months only. And again, you know, you got to realize that people want to get out of the rental business, so I wouldn't do anything specific for people elderly or disabled, even though I'm not I I am empathetic to them. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to number five unless anyone has anything further. Okay. Relocation payments. If a landlord seeks to recover possession of a rental unit by means of a no-fault termination, i.e. removal from the rental market, owner move-in or substantial rehab, major repairs, then they must make relocation payments to each tenant of the rental unit. Relocation payments are paid, are to be paid at the time of the service of the notice of termination of tenancy. The proposal is, we propose the following base relocation payment amounts based on the size of the unit and the expected costs tenant households incur from moving, including first and last month's rent, security deposit, moving, packing, expenses, et cetera. There's a recommendation for seven thousand dollars for a studio, nine thousand dollars for a one-bedroom, eleven thousand dollars for a two-bedroom and thirteen thousand dollars for a three-plus bedroom. If a tenant household includes a tenant who is disabled sixty-two years or older, seventeen years or younger or terminally ill, they should receive an additional three thousand relocation payment. Relocation payments should increase annually at the rate of increase in the rent of primary residence expenditure category or the CPI for Marin County for the preceding calendar year. I'm sure there's going to be some discussion on this one. Okay. I didn't see who had their hand up first.
Councilmember Kohler did.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I thought, I think the costs are quite high and I did some research on this earlier and I'll be frank, I can't remember where I found it, but I would suggest that it's limited to one month rent only rather than, these costs are really out of sight. So that is my two cents. One month rent only for all of them and nothing specific like the additional three thousand dollars.
May I go, Mayor?
Sure.
Great. Yeah, I am really grateful for the addendum regarding relocation pay amounts. I think when folks see those numbers, it's like, where do they come from? It was really helpful to see other communities sort of mixture of communities, some of them quite close to us, probably have plenty of workers that actually come and service folks here in Fairfax and in Marin that that, you know, need a variety of services, but um, yeah, I think it was really helpful to see that and to take an average of that and I really appreciate the removal of the outlier because that would have skewed the statistics, but to have actual data in front of us here that shows where these communities regionally and throughout the state have pegged these numbers based on, you know, the different size of of space spaces. I think that's very helpful in in terms of grounding how we can come to that number and be more comfortable with that number. So, you know, we heard a couple of folks speak on this and it it is expensive to to have to move and to all of a sudden cobble together the funds to do that. So I, I mean, I, if I were evicted for no cause right now, I I would, I would have to leave the community. I mean, I don't, I don't have the the funds to necessarily provide first last month and security deposit. And I I don't think we should leave it up to chance, no pun intended, kind of ironic, but we shouldn't leave it up to, you know, the beneficence of a landlord, whether or not they choose to keep the security deposit or find a reason to to, you know, give it back. So I I think it's good to have the safety net there. The other thing I think to Councilmember Kohler's point, the the one month is already captured in AD fourteen eighty-two. And we kind of have a sense if, you know, all of the the big you know, all of the, the big real estate companies that have been fighting against tenant protections and, you know, different associations that are working to water those things down, if the watered-down version at the state is one month, that could be waived for, you know, not paying the final month of rent, I think it makes sense for us if we're trying to strengthen protections and safety nets, to go a bit further and, and make sure that we're supporting tenants. The other thing I would add to that is that one of the things that gave me a little more confidence about all of these, frankly, is the opportunity for a landlord to appeal these processes, but also for a landlord and a tenant to come to some alternative agreement potentially, if they decide to do that in writing. And so there, there are these sort of safety valves, if there's a compromise opportunity, but I don't want to water it down, you know, just on the off-chance that there's going to be, you know, a really nice cordial relationship. I want to make sure that we have the strongest thing possible upfront, and then if there's a way to, for people to find compromises, I'm more supportive of that. So I'm in favor of this. I think for, for people who are terminally ill, that might not be able to actually move the stuff themselves and will incur additional costs, I think it, it makes sense to keep the additional money in there for those tenants and residents in Fairfax as well. Thanks.
Um, yeah, I'll go ahead. You know, I heard what all of our commenters said about the importance of the relocation payments, and, and support that, you know, we and our tenants need time and help, financial assistance to relocate. I do find the numbers high, given that in our, in our small town, we, we actually don't know, and this is another piece that I probably should have spoken about before we went forward, but we don't actually know the numbers of sort of the big corporate company landlords versus some of our just local residents who have one unit and they're renting. Or they're, they're renting, or they have, you know, they have tenants in their one unit or two. And so by, you know, looking at this, this number, and then thinking about that this could potentially be another landlord on a fixed income, who really is making it sort of month-to-month by what they're collecting, it feels, it feels, it feels too big. I understand that 1482 basically just throws that one month, and it's, it's diluted, and it's diluted by, you know, the fact that it doesn't really mean much to the corporate landlords. But here it may mean more than in that kind of instance. So I would, you know, I'm not actually prepared. I looked at the comparisons. I appreciate that that table was provided for us. I'm not actually prepared to say what I think that number should be, but I'm not sure that, that, that we're doing right by our smaller landlords by adding that kind of additional cost. So I would at least take it down to first and last months, but not including a security deposit, which I think could come from the existing landlord. And then, you know, moving expenses, I'd rather not include that. I do think an additional allocation for folks who are, who are terminally ill is a really good idea. I'm not sure 3,000. I mean, you know, to be honest with you, these are all, these, these are all necessary. All of these protections and assistance, as much as possible, are, are, are so important. I, I just worry that we are disproportionately affecting our smaller, our smaller landlords. And this one just sticks out for me, because it's a number that we're slapping on people, that is different, you know, to enter into a negotiation about numbers is a little different than, you know, numbers of days, and numbers of months, when you're negotiating with a, with a landlord. So I, I'm not sure, I, I'll stop talking, but I, but I think that number needs to be looked at.
A clarifying question. When you said you don't think it should include moving expenses... You don't...
I mean, I think a rent is a fixed number, a first and a last month. We know that, I feel there's play, there's, there's leeway here with the security deposit, but moving, there are many, many different ways to move. So in some ways, I think we, that number should not be fixed as, as part of this, or maybe it's not, yeah, I mean, I, I think it shouldn't be calculated into the number that we come up with, if we're going to specify a number.
Can I just ask? Comments, I have comments, but where did Bruce go?
That's what I was just going to ask. I think we lost him.
Why don't we take a five-minute break? I need some water. I'm sure everyone else could do some, too, and I'll try to reach Bruce. Thank you. So, shall we resume until we... Okay. So we're on number five. And so, the data that we've been talking about, right, the table, all of that data is for jurisdictions that are in rent-controlled markets? So, Renee, the first and last month is not going to help you if you're forced out and you're in a, a new market, right? It's not going to help you. It's not going to give you what you need, right? The first and last, because you were in a rent-controlled market, and now you're potentially having to leave. Right? I, I would suggest that we explore taking down these numbers slightly, or consider a three-month rent?
What do you mean, three-month rent?
Three months. So instead of first and last, three months. Or instead of...
Right now, it's first, last, security, and moving expenses, as has been proposed.
Yeah, well, it's, you know,
It's...
It's an approximation of
That's right.
what all of those things would cost. There's, it's not really costed out. It's just how other municipalities to date have come to that number, and then pegging it based on an average, and then it would be, it would go up by CPI, I guess, right? Oh, no, it wouldn't change. Oh, it would, it would. Sorry. It would go up by CPI. Consumer Price Index, sorry for the acronym for the public.
How does that sit with you Renee?
You know, it's just, you know, overall, I'm, I'm just not as comfortable with these numbers, given what I explained and expressed before.
Right, that's why I adjusted them. I came up with a counterproposal.
Well, three months is very similar to what we're looking at.
Okay.
Right?
I mean, I have friends that have recently had to leave, and it's, it's incredible what you have to put down in, in Marin County.
Do you think we're going to be able, one of the suggestions I have Mayor is, let's move on to the next thing. Let's get through all this. I mean, I think we're kind of at the wordsmithing or negotiations, and I don't know that we're really prepared to do that. Let's see if we can get through the rest of this.
Yeah, agreed.
That makes, and then, so anyway, thank you Chance, or Vice Mayor, I apologize.
All right, we can put this one on hold and revisit it at the end. Um, number six, relocation payments for temporary displacement. If a tenant is displaced from their rental unit for renovation work for 30 days or less, the landlord must make short-term relocation payments to the tenant. The tenant may elect not to receive short-term relocation payments. If the tenant receives short-term relocation payments, they must pay their normal rent. If the tenant has elected not to receive short-term relocation payments, they are not obligated to pay rent until they reoccupy the rental unit. So the proposed amounts, hotel or motel, 168.15 cents per household per day. For meals, $33.85 per occupant, per occupant per day. Laundry is $1.12 per day per household, and then pet accommodations, 32.73 per cat and 58.69 per dog. Short-term relocation payment amounts should be adjusted yearly based on the CPI increase. I didn't see who had their name, their hand up first.
Councilmember Kohler.
Go ahead.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Okay, so I would suggest that this is kind of punitive on landlords. I would say paying $75 per day only, and if the tenant needs to move out their stuff, the landlord should pay for the storage of that stuff. This is temporary. And, you know, you're paying more based on this proposal than what I used to get on per diem when I traveled for the state. Anyway, so I'm just saying $75 a day, and if they have to move out stuff, the landlord would pay for the storage. Thank you.
Um, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm just in support of the relocation payments for temporary displacement as proposed. I think for, I was, it took me a minute to be like, oh, wait a second, like, this is probably what it costs per night for, you know, hotel, but then like, I was like, meal expenses? I'm like, oh wait, you don't have your, your access to your oven and your, you know, all the different things that you would need to use to eat, and pet accommodations. I don't have a pet, plants, but I don't have a pet. But I, I can imagine that that adds up too. So I, I think it's reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead Renee. Or I thought you had your hand up.
I did, I did. No, this is perfectly reasonable. I'm currently displaced, and so I understand the costs of, of every meal and the cost of accommodation, and I also understand how the insurance companies pay. So it makes very, very good sense to me that a landlord would pay for that temporary relocation.
Okay.
And that amount, that amount actually is really quite reasonable.
I'm good as is as well. And Bruce has not rejoined us. Okay. Seven, breach of lease qualifications. A tenant may be lawfully evicted if, after written notice to cease, they substantially violate any of the written material, excuse me, written material terms of their lease. However, a tenant may not be evicted for refusing to sign a new lease. To constitute a breach of lease, the substantially violated term must be reasonable and legal, and have been accepted in writing by the tenant as part of the lease. If the violated terms are part of a new lease, then the landlord must have first notified the tenant in writing that they need not accept such terms.
Could I ask for some clarification on that? Who, I don't know who wants to take that on, but that, that one, I need a little more in-depth information.
What, anything in particular that you're not...
Perhaps I can add something. I kind of think what this is doing, so if you go back to the, to just cause eviction for various terms such as breaching the lease, what this is doing, when I read it, is creating a different standard for what breach of lease entails. So normally on just cause, if somebody breaches the lease, they breach the lease and they can be evicted. This is creating a new kind of standard for what a breach of lease entails. And so that's the way I read it, and I personally don't agree with that. I think we should leave it to breach of lease and stay with, you know, that's a legal interpretation, etc.
I guess I, I need, the clarification I'm looking for is in the, if the violated terms are part of the new lease, then the landlord must have, so if you could explain that. If a tenant may not be evicted for refusing to sign a new lease...
So it would basically be if you had a lease agreement, and the way I'm understanding it is, if you have a lease agreement, and all of a sudden, you know, you're, you're going through, you're eight months in, nine months in, 10 months in, and there's something that's not in the lease agreement, that your landlord says, this is a breach, this is a breach of our contract. They can't come back and, and pressure you with, with a new lease that now includes new things that they're adding to the contract. Is my understanding, unless it's reasonable and, and legal.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with this one.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Barbara, you are not?
No.
Barbara, would you mind just explaining one briefly what your opposition is? You're muted.
As I said before, the way I read this is, you know, creating a new standard for what breach of lease is. Any, any breach of lease, you know, if somebody comes to you and makes you sign a lease that says, we allowed you to have pets, and now you got to get rid of pets. And you don't want to sign that lease. I guess that's something. I, I think if the terms are substantially the same in the lease, then there shouldn't be a new standard. And anything, if you go to court, there's something called a reasonable person standard. So, you know, this one to me is just creating a whole new standard that would have to be litigated. I, I just don't think we should include it. But obviously, everything I haven't agreed with, everybody else has disagreed with, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about this. Thanks.
Okay. Number eight, failure to pay rent qualifications. A tenant may be lawfully evicted if they fail to pay the rent. However, a tenant may not be evicted if the landlord refuses to accept rent paid on behalf of the tenant by a third party, e.g. a government agency or nonprofit organization. Acceptance of rental payments made on behalf of the tenant by a third party shall not create a tenancy between the landlord and the third party, as long as either the landlord or the tenant provide written notice that no new tenancy is intended. as long as either the landlord or the tenant provide written notice that no new tenancy is intended. I didn't see who had their hands up first. Sorry.
It was me this time. Yeah, thank you. I think that, well, I'm in support of this. I think it makes a lot of sense, especially as we've been discussing issues around homelessness and the opportunities available to folks, whether it's nonprofit or county government or local government, the ability to, to provide basically like bridge funding to make sure that people don't fall into homelessness or can create some sort of stability a, as they try to figure out their next steps. If, if there is that provision of funding, I think it should be able to be accepted because there are more and more third-party services, nonprofits, that are, are trying to make sure that people don't slip into homelessness or, you know, for whatever reason, especially during the pandemic, you know, lots of uncertainty around job security and whatnot. So, you know, those types of services have propped up. And I think it makes sense to, to have this as a part of this.
Thank you.
So I, I completely support it. I don't think it matters who pays the rent. And I know Vice Mayor Cacciano went into these new programs. But what if somebody's father pays the rent? I mean, it doesn't matter. As long as the rent is paid, who cares who pays it? So I completely support that.
And it was also, it was also covered in our earlier protections around, you know, source of income protection. Not quite exactly the same thing, but the concept of, you know, we, so I'm absolutely in support of this. It seems, it seems not reas, not just reasonable, but very important.
It feels like an anti-discriminatory clause to me. And I, I think there's a reason why it's there. I think there has been growing trends. So, yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
This is the town clerk speaking. I have heard from Councilmember Ackerman that he is not going to be able to rejoin the meeting. So I will note that for the minutes, he is absent from the time he left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so for four of us, so we're moving on to number nine, substantial rehabilitation for health and safety. A tenant may be lawfully displaced if their landlord must make substantial repairs for health and safety reasons that cannot be completed while the unit is occupied. However, such evictions are by definition temporary. Section five dot five dot zero four zero C three of the Town of Fairfax Municipal Code should be updated to make this clear and explicit drawing on section five point five seven oh three oh B five of the model ordinance for updated language. Barbara?
I think it's already in our code, and I don't think that we should revise it based on outside party suggestions for how to adopt legal language. We should defer to our council to weigh in if there's something unclear. I looked at it, it looked pretty clear to me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, I would agree with Councilmember Kohler. I think it, we're really relying on Town Attorney Colson to, and, and Town Manager Abrams to take this, this direction and, and bring something forward. There is language that's been provided in a, a model ordinance, but of course, I, I trust our town attorney to utilize her experience and, and the provided language and the current language on the books and, and make that determination when, you know, if and when that time occurs where it's brought back to us, so.
I concur.
Okay. So are we, we're saying we think it's fine, we're going to defer to Janet on this and encourage her to look at the model ordinance, but it's not a, a no necessarily? Or are we saying no?
No, I think it's that we, we think we're already, there is already some clarity around the definition of temporary for substantial rehabilitation for health and safety. And as long as that is true, then we would not need to make any changes, but I think as long as it's clear and explicit.
Okay, you got that, Janet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Number 10, buyout agreements. The landlord and tenant may negotiate or agree to end a tenancy voluntarily in exchange for money or other considerations. All buyout agreements must be in writing. Prior to making a buyout offer, the landlord must provide each tenant in that rental unit a written disclosure that includes a statement that the tenant has the, has a right not to enter into a buyout agreement, a statement that the tenant may choose to consult with an attorney before entering into a buyout agreement, a statement that the tenant may rescind the buyout agreement for up to forty-five days after it is fully executed, a space for each tenant to sign and write the date the landlord provided the tenant with this, the disclosure. I don't know who's, who's hand up was first.
Read my hand first. So generally, this is what I was referring to before. It's like there are all of these other ways that we're strengthening things, but there's also the safety valve if, if folks are able to come to some amicable, you know, situation. So I, I definitely support having this in here. I, I don't know the forty-five days. I mean, it seems fine. I, I don't know if it needs to be that long. The other thing that I was going to note, and I don't know if this has to be clearly stated somewhere, but just being mindful that there, you know, when people are handed a contract, especially if it's handed to them in a language that's not their first language or their primary language, some things might be confusing. So of course, they have the right to speak with an attorney. But I, I thought of, it might be equitable to ensure that, you know, they're able to be provided something in, in the language that they're, they're comfortable with as opposed to just English automatically. But that, that's just looking out for other tenants that don't, that, who don't have English as their, their first language.
Yeah, good, good call out. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm in agreement with the first bullet that talks about the tenant having a right not to enter in the buyout agreement. The tenant can consult with an attorney.
You're, you're in agreement on that too?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not in agreement with saying this tenant may rescind the buyout agreement for up to forty-five days after it's fully executed. I think that's unreasonable and it's not providing a level playing field. And someone agrees to a buyout agreement, then they've agreed to it. And then a space for each tenant to sign and write the date the landlord provided the tenant with the disclosure. I think that's good. So I'm in agreement with bullets one, two, and four, but not with three. And I agree with Vice Mayor Cacciano that if English is a second language, that they provide it in the appropriate language. I'm not sure what your words were, but something to that effect.
I absolutely concur with Councilmember Kohler, and, and I agree about that third bullet.
So, yeah, I, anything else before?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm short of weight tonight.
I could be comfortable with dramatically reducing the forty-five days or omitting it, that clause.
I mean, is there, is there, does it make sense to, I, I, I am in agreement. I just am trying to think of the circumstance where like twenty-four hour, forty-eight hour. But, but I, I think this long period of time is, is not fair if people start making alternative plans after they think they've hammered out an agreement.
If I may, I, I also think, you know, in this case, you know, these are tenants protections, but it could pertain very much the same to the landlord. You know, that both would have some grace period or there'd be none at all.
Think if somebody signs an agreement, I mean, I, I would rather not add any time for either the landlord or the tenant. If you actually sign it, you sign it, and then people make their plans.
Agree.
Yeah. Yeah. Can you live with that chance?
Yep.
Okay, so we're in favor of the first, second, and fourth bullet, omitting the third bullet. Okay. Number 11, stages of eviction. Landlords are prohibited from terminating a residential tenancy without cause. The various stages of termination should be clear and explicitly defined to ensure compliance with this fundamental principle. And recommendation that section five dot five zero four zero of our municipal code be updated or replaced with the model ordinance that was provided. Barbara?
I think we should, I think this is in law, and I don't think we should be changing it. But I think I would defer to the town attorney to take a look at this, but I don't think we should be setting up new standards. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sorry, I'm trying to look.
At the, at the, at the language of the model?
Yeah.
If you, if you have that in front of you, could you read that?
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Well, I think, I mean, it's another place where I agree with, with Councilmember Kohler in terms of deferring to Janet. You know, we want to make as clear and as explicit the, the stages of termination. So perhaps when that comes back to us, we can, we'll then have a draft, and we can compare it against the model and compare it against what's on the books already. But it feels like we don't have that, that model language in this staff report, so. Yeah, I'm willing to agree and defer to our attorney.
Okay. Sorry, I am, I am pulling it up. Do you want me to read it, or do you want to just move on? I can do it either.
I think we should move on. I think this is all going to be cross-referenced by our attorney in looking at all of these pieces that we want to incorporate.
Okay. Applicability, number 12, just cause eviction protections should apply to affordable housing units and junior accessory dwelling units, which is five dot five four oh two oh B two and B four of our municipal code should be struck to reflect this. I'm in agreement with this. Go ahead, Barbara.
Okay, so actually, Lisa Blash and I talked about this at one point regarding people living in your house. And going back to a few years ago when I wanted to extend the just cause to units in people's houses, I was kind of upset about that. But Lisa and I talked about the idea of a unit in somebody's house and that there can be reasons why it's extraordinarily difficult to have somebody living in your house that don't meet the just cause eviction. And you, you're really stuck where they're in your house. So I don't agree to that for that reason. And then as far as affordable housing units, I disagree with that as well. You know, I think that affordable housing, there are requirements in the law for what can be done. And there's different burdens on, on people with affordable housing or real affordable housing. So I would not want to do that. And if we go back to our just cause ordinance, affordable housing is defined as all units in developments where at least forty-nine percent of the units are restricted as affordable. So that means restricted, deed restricted. And then units with government subsidized rents. And it goes on to say such tenant's portion does not exceed thirty percent of the household income. And then a dwelling unit owned or operated by any government agency. So that's not just some quasi-affordable housing. And there are specific requirements that those folks need to go through to evict someone. And we, we had that situation out here in Victory Village where there were some tenants that were extraordinarily compromised and making people's lives miserable. So I'm not supportive of adding, and you have to actually look at our just cause ordinance to see what affordable is defined as. It's not just anything that we call affordable. So I'm not supportive of extending to Jdus or affordable housing units. Thank you.
Yeah, I, if I may, I, I feel like I really grappled with the Jdu part when we put these original protections in place. And I feel as though, you know, I'm, I'm, I definitely am torn, as I've been on many of these things, because it feels just enough different in terms of having someone have their own sort of housing and home that we want, you know, to, that, that people have, you know, as a basic human right versus having a room, which a Jdu really is with, and can be a very small piece, that to me feels that it's often more shorter-term rentals. People maybe don't make a Jdu their long-term home. I, I'm generalizing, so please forgive me if folks that are listening are saying, wait, I live in a Jdu and it's my home. But I know people who would think twice about doing a Jdu conversion if they had so many protections against being able to sort of reclaim that space in their primary residence. I do understand, you know, and I want to protect as much potential rental and, you know, tenant right as possible in doing this work. But Jdu, I almost might leave out. So I would leave Jdu out. And affordable housing, I agree with Barbara. I went and read back through all of what we have on the books and in many of the other cities and, and counties that have got their just cause protections. And affordable housing has just a vast, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not being very articulate, but affordable means a lot of different things. And I think we don't, I'm not sure we know enough in doing this as a blanket affordable housing. I, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure that it's, that, I think it needs to be fleshed out more as to what we are specifically talking about. Whether it's, you know, deed restricted, 100% affordable, you know, develop, nonprofit developers or, yeah, I, I'm not sure that, I, you know, that I, that we know enough as it's written right now. It should be more explored. I'm also, I'm not sure if we have the authority to do, to, to put these, these restrictions on some of the government-funded units. Barbara, is that true? Is there, are there, are there preclusions for, for some of the funding models that are funding our affordable housing?
I, you know, honestly, I don't know, but I know that they have really different requirements than we do. I mean, Janet might be able to speak to that. This is kind of a separate part of the law. Janet, can you speak to that?
Well, what I was going to say was that, you know, we're going to take everything you give us. We haven't looked at this in depth yet because we don't have any authorization to do so. So we're going to take what you've given us and, and what your direction is. And we're going to look at, at all of the things that might impact it. And, and I've got notes here of several things that I've been thinking of as we're going through these. And so what comes back to you will be annotated. There could be, you know, a confidential memo to you about some items that will go along with it. So I think we can cover that in, in one of those two ways, either annotation or confidential memo.
Either, could you say those again? Either one?
Well, when, when we get direction from you to go forward and to look at this and to look into it, research it, write what you want, we'll be looking at a number of different issues that I've kind of spotted tonight and made some notes on.
Yeah.
So when we bring it back to you, it may be annotated with commentary about different provisions, or there could be, and/or there could be a confidential memo that will come to you that will explain why we included some things, didn't include others, some of the pros and cons of doing so, et cetera.
Okay.
That's why I envision this coming back to you.
Chance, Vice Mayor, did you have a?
Yeah, and it is actually in a similar vein. So I, given that this is direction to staff and our town attorney and this is going to come back to us, my feeling about number 12 is, for one, Jdus, Jdus are basically like units. They're, they're dwelling units. They have kitchenettes. They have separate entrances. They're, they're basically just like other units where people live. So I'm not inclined to necessarily carve them out since they're, they're structured and designed to be basically like separate dwelling units. It's not just a room in, in your house. The other thing regarding affordability, like my preference is for renter protections to be for the broadest amount of renters in our community. So that's how I'm coming at it. I expect that Janet will come back to us with some, some additional guidance about, you know, the pros and cons of how we go about it, you know, one way or another way, or how we, you know, define affordable housing in, in whatever comes back. But I, I guess I'm putting out there to staff and to you all that my preference would be to have the broadest scope for protections and for strengthening just cause eviction ordinances. So that's how I see it and I, that's how I'd like it to come back.
Just one quick thing, not all Jdus have separate entrances. They don't have to.
They also don't necessarily have, they, they may share a toilet.
That's right, there's shared bathroom, yeah.
Oh, I think I already said in the beginning, I'm in favor as is with number 12. But it sounds like we're tied on this one, but we can have Janet provide us some considerations for affordable, but I think we're tied on the Jdu.
And do we want to go back to number fives?
We do.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion that I'm really not sure what we can do with number five unless you just throw out numbers? Would it be better to, maybe you and council member or Vice Mayor Kachano have worked on this, maybe look at alternate proposals potentially that would change those somewhat? I'm just throwing that out because I have a feeling we're going to just throw out anything, just to throw something at the wall and even though it's not late compared to our usual thing, I think we're all a little tired.
Yeah. So you're proposing that Chance and I come back on this?
Yeah, well, we know that this is going to come back to us with annotations or something like that.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that you guys consider taking a hard look at that and maybe you feed those to our town manager and our town attorney that could be part of the package.
Okay, so you, council member Kohler and council member Goddard are open to the notion of including a relo, something.
I'm open to it. I'm not open to it as broadly as others might be, but I'm open to it. And I already expressed my comment.
Yeah, and I'm open to it as well. And I, I'm open to upping the ante from what 1482 does state, which is one month. So. But I just feel comfortable with the numbers as presented.
Got it.
The hard part is that more than one month, but less than these numbers is, is like one and a half months rent or something like that based on rent price. No, I'm being a little facetious, but yeah, we'll, we'll take those things into account when we come back with something.
Sounds good.
But also acknowledging that like it's pretty dang expensive. So.
I think if you, I know this is not something you want to consider, but I think you do have to look at the landlord side of it. And there are landlords that are renting out more than one unit, more than two units, maybe have an apartment building that they bought some time ago with 10 units. Or maybe some of our apartment buildings that we have are not incredibly wealthy people. So I think if you try to balance it a little bit, maybe you'll be able to come up with something a little different. But there you go.
All right, I'm going to recap and just want y'all to keep me honest here. So numbers one, two, three and four, I have as is, three to, three of five in support. Do you concur with that? Okay. Item five, we just talked about. Item six.
Six is as in?
Yeah, we have three as is. Sorry, I'm trying to read my writing. Seven as well.
And eight.
And.
And nine.
With four, all, four was consensus of four of us. And then nine.
And then 10 was complete agreement except for the X-ing out the buyout, rescinding the buyout agreement, the 45 day thing.
The third bullet, yeah.
And adding in the translation for.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. 11, we're deferring to Janet.
And then 12 was split. And it was, there would be like information provided from Janet about affordable housing, is that right? Or about scope?
Since we're split, we might be able, is there a way you could, you know, present it and then we'd hopefully we'd have a fifth person? A tiebreaker?
Right. So what I imagine would happen here is that we would provide information and whatnot and, and bring this one back and it would be decided when you had a full council. When you had all five members, right? So we'll put it in there, but it's something that is still left to be decided. I mean, all of these are actually, but that one in particular, as far as the Jdus are concerned, right?
And now are we teeing this up to coincide with the rent stabilization agenda item for September?
Well, it certainly can't come back in August, but potentially in September. I am not a fan of combining just cause and rent stabilization in the same ordinance. And there are reasons for that and I'm going to.
I wasn't suggesting that, but.
Include those. Well, that's the way the ordinance, the draft ordinance is presented. This is incorporated in that draft ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was, I was, I've been working on them as two separate, but.
Okay.
So I thought there would be two separate agenda items.
There, I mean, there's a lot, there's a fair amount of overlap. There's, some of the things I noticed in, in this just cause refers to some of the rent stabilization provisions.
Right.
So I think there's, you know, they have to mesh.
Mm-hmm. It'll make sense to, to have those on the same agenda. Especially because, because of the way that they spoke to each other in the model ordinance and there are some changes in the way that we asked, you know, gave direction to staff about the, about everything. So, yeah.
But as I said, I, I'm not a fan of combining them in the same ordinance as is done with the model ordinance. And there are reasons for that, which I will explain to you in a future date. There may be a fair amount of explanation and whatnot provided to you in a confidential memo. So there, there are things that we're going to be looking at, some of these provisions. Give me cause for concern. And so they will be looked at very closely.
Starting to cut out a bit, but I think we got that.
That's really all I want to say about that right now.
Okay, thank.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, I got to get on my ducks and around here.
Are we coming to a close on this item, Mayor?
Yes, we are.
May, may I toss something out and it, just for a brief, you can shut me down, but as we're going through this, I keep thinking that there are a lot of people in Fairfax that have no idea we're doing this. And we have done due diligence in our newsletters, our agendas, our postings. We've considered it. We've conversed about it. What would anyone think of holding a forum, an educational forum so that people, that can be promoted, advertised as that, as such? And before we dive into a September agenda item on, on rent stabilization, that we make sure that we've done our, our outreach? Because it, quite honestly, I mean, this has been a really an amazing process and I've appreciated everyone who's come forward, but we really haven't heard anything from any landlords.
Well, that's not true. Today we haven't. We heard from several in the past.
Several, but when this was brought.
And we've gotten emails, so that's not accurate.
I, I understand, but we haven't heard from any opposition except for one landlord. So maybe very few. And, and I'm not asking for opposition. Please don't get me wrong. What I'm asking for is to make sure that we really have done our due diligence and provided an opportunity, even if just to educate the public about what it is that we're doing. Because we've been studying it, especially you and Chance and Barbara. So I, I just, it, it's an idea that I think would be, would be a good thing to do. This is a very different experience to what we had when Larry Bragman brought this forward, however, many years ago. And I just want to make sure that we're touching, touching all, all bases.
So I have a suggestion of one way it could be done. And number one, I think we could ask the Realtors, you know, we're in Realtors, to really send out information to the landlords in Fairfax. And I think they would do that. And one of the things we could do is consider having like a workshop before our September meeting. Now, that would make it kind of a long meeting, but you could do something of an hour before the meeting for people just to weigh in on what we're proposing. I don't know if that's what.
Hour before, an hour before the September meeting?
Yeah, I mean, you could have a presentation on what we're proposing, not what the DSA is proposing, but what we're proposing.
I would do it after the, after we get the actual language from, I, I would wait until we see what Janet provides us personally.
Okay, well, I think that makes sense. I, I just don't think it's a good idea to try to do something in August with a lot of people on vacation. So I, I'm in agreement with you, Chance, and with you, Renee, that I think it would be a good idea. I mean, this is a pretty big deal. And it, it seems like your suggestion, Renee, is a good one. Maybe we can think more about how that would work. Maybe Vice Mayor Kachano has some ideas about when that would work. I'm just not sure if it would be a great idea for us to be sitting there with ordinances and then making the decision if we want to have a broader swath of folks. So maybe who are on the other side of the coin. I like it.
So, yeah, I mean, of course I'm in favor of public engagement and as much transparency as possible. I did do a next door post on this meeting encouraging public comment. Chance, I guess I'm thinking about your comment about, so if, if the notion is let's do some community education, community engagement, I don't know that it needs to be with every specificity, you know, all the nuances that may or may not get passed. I thought your, your idea was let's make sure we've done the appropriate outreach and get input comments on stronger renter protections, just the, the whole thing we just went through as well as rent stabilization. I mean, I, what I don't want to do is kick the can down the road. And there's been a lot of, this is, I think, the third time we've talked about renter, stronger renter protection. So not the fourth. So I don't want to, I don't want to create the illusion with, by your comment that we haven't done.
No, that's why I prefaced it by saying.
From the Realtors, I have emails from the Realtors. We've got plenty of emails. They know about it. And they came to the meeting. So please don't create the perception that we haven't done right by the public. Like there's, there's awareness on, there's 600 signatures and. right by the public. Like, there's, there's awareness on, there's 600 signatures and we heard from the Realtors, so.
Okay, I didn't hear from any Realtors and I'm not trying to create a perception. I, I prefaced by saying that we have posted, we've done everything we should, we've discussed it and had conversation, we've looked at policy. I, I'm not saying that. I just believe as an individual that there are folks that don't. And when we have done any big policy, we've had some form of, of a workshop.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of it, I guess.
But, but it-
Wondering is, you know, the timing of it, you know, I'm not really interested in kicking the can down the road.
Are we gonna have a second meeting in September?
I think once, if I could just interject, I would just say, once the, once there's language that comes back to us and there's an ordinance and there's a vote, if we go forward with this between that first and second reading, when we actually know what we are going to do, I think then it would make sense to have an hour or a 90-minute period of time to share with the public that's interested and get the word out like, hey, this is something that we're moving forward with. And this is, you know, the, the actual language and here's the mechanics of it. And we could actually respond to people's requests and walk people through things. But I, I think that would be the, the way to, to address what Mayor Hellman just mentioned, which is, you know, we can keep saying, we want people, before we make a decision, we want people to come and share their perspective, but like, after the fourth meeting of posting and putting it on Nextdoor and putting it on social media, it, it does beg the question, are we just delaying? Or dithering, you know what I mean? So.
Well, I just want to add something. You know, Renee and I have been on this council a really long time. We've done some major policy things. Cannabis, so many meetings. 5G, so many meetings. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm getting a little irritated because this is a major change. And and so I'm one of these people who likes to get stuff done. But without really hearing from some of the small mom and pop landlords, and I got a couple of emails, and Romeo Arietta showed up at one meeting. You know, what's wrong with spending a, a little more time and making sure that people really know and we've heard from a lot of folks? I mean, well, okay, but so you're saying we're kicking the can down the road. I mean, it's important stuff. So let's make sure that we get this, you know, we get this right. And so let's take a little more time, not a ton of time. And, and let's do as Renee suggests. I'm not really sure what Vice Mayor Cuttrano suggested. Are we just sitting there with an ordinance and saying, okay, now provide your public comments?
I think my, my comment was just to say, and I think we're all in agreement about making sure that folks, that we're communicating what we're up to and, and that we want people to be, you know, totally informed to the best of their ability, the best of our ability. But I, I guess my comment is, if we say like, we're going to schedule something in August, or we're going to schedule some, we're going to wait on an ordinance, or wait on bringing, bringing something forward at a council meeting because we want to have a public discussion, dialogue about this, I, I don't think we have the, the substance to even invite people to a dialogue and say, this is what we're, this is what we're doing. I mean, we just gave direction to staff to bring us something. So I, that, I think that's my point is just, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable next week walking through the mechanics of everything because we haven't even received a final draft of what we're talking about.
And I'm saying, don't do it in July or August. Do something in September. But Renee has something.
Yeah, I mean, where this comes from is, I, I believe that we still have folks, and I'm quite sure of it, that don't know the difference between rent control and rent stabilization. Let's, let's just say, or the nuances there. There are some very basic things that are, that we won't have the language and we won't have the ordinance, but I wouldn't bring an ordinance for a first reading and then in between first and second reading, do a workshop. Because that's already a long way down the track to a second, to, 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 you know, an adoption. I think that we just need to have folks come to the table to understand, one, you know, what we're doing, what are the different pieces of rent control? I, I don't think people know. I, I really don't. I think people who have been following and watching. But I think that generally the public-
Renee, are you suggesting that we go, are you suggesting that we, we, we go through what we did tonight and say, well, this is what we decided?
No, 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 no. I, I'm not.
It's more of a, it's more of a general informational session on the concepts around-
Some of the things that Fairfax is considering based on direction that we've given to staff. So it's not just like, you know, a definition from-
That is what we just went through. How is that different?
No, it's not. It's not. It's not point by point. It's something, and I would do it as a form of a presentation or a, a workshop, like we've had on the housing element with the planning commission. And it would then lead, if we had a second meeting in September, then we could consider what comes back to us in terms of the language and the, and the direction we've given to staff and to Janet. But I think without, without inviting the layperson to the table to understand what we're considering, there's a balance between looking at all these 12 points again, which I'm not a proponent of, and then just walking in with an ordinance that's very complex and dense and saying, we're, we've just, you know, introduced this. And here's Chance's big comments before we-
I have a suggestion that might work. And maybe it wouldn't work, but we don't have things fully formed. And I'm in agreement that I'd hate to see an ordinance and then say, well, let's just have public comment. But why don't we have the concepts fully laid out? Fully laid out. So, and I'll be honest, I don't know the difference between rent stabilization and rent control. I thought they were the same thing with a different name. So I'm ignorant. But just here's what we want to do with rent control. We would have staff put this together. This is not a DSA presentation. It's staff based on the direction that's been given to them. And as part of that, what the just cause would cover, fully baked, without maybe the ordinance language, but fully baked, so that we're not speaking from just concepts and we're going, oh, I like that, I like that. Anyway, Vice Mayor Cuttrano, what do you think about something that's not exactly an ordinance, but really close?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just hope that we invite, if, if we do end up having an ordinance brought to us, I'd hope that we invite all the people that are interested to the meeting where we're discussing that ordinance and all of the mechanics of that ordinance, which would be at the town council meeting. So I don't know if we're just redoubling our effort just for the sake of it, or if there, if there's something material there. But it, I still am not totally convinced that it's the, the best use of time. If we really want valuable comments on what, what is coming to us in September. But yeah, I mean, the, the more outreach, the better. So if-
So are you saying, Barbara, do that September 3rd and then September 17th, the ordinance?
Yeah. And, and what I would say was this, remember what we did when Adam was here, where we always had PowerPoint presentations? So you could have fully baked without the specifics of every detail in the ordinance, which gets kind of complex. But every key concept for just cause for rent stabilization, and then Heather or Janet could do a PowerPoint presentation on all these specifics. And then you have the second meeting in September where we try to introduce the first reading and the ordinance.
Can we do a first reading in a special meeting?
I think we can. I think it's a second.
You can't do a second reading.
Can't do adoption in a special.
Got it.
So would, would that work so that we have, we're not just talking from papers, five different papers?
I would appreciate that. And I, I think it would make me feel like when the headline in the IJ says that Fairfax adopts rent control, we wouldn't have anyone who could basically say that was hidden in an agenda somewhere.
And, and I would say-
Will happen. But I think we should, you know, and have something that we promote as a workshop. And then we bring all of the ordinances forward.
And we may have to do some sort of mailout that covers a lot of Fairfax. Ask the Realtors if they will send it to landlords in Fairfax. So we make sure that we know that not everybody's going to follow this, but we have done our best work to get the word out.
Heather or Janet, do you have any questions about this?
I would just like to repeat to make sure I understood. So for the regular meeting in September, we would provide a PowerPoint with bullet points of the, all of the key points for eviction control and then for rent stabilization. And then in, in a second special meeting, we would bring an ordinance according to the direction you just gave us. Was that correct?
I think I would add to that, Heather, that you would also have a staff report that really lays out all those concepts in some level of detail. So it's not just a PowerPoint. Both things. So the staff report would lay it out pretty clear, what you're doing for rent stabilization, what, what direction you've gotten for just cause, if, if there is annotations that need to be added because there's still some uncertainty, which we think there may be, put it in there. But I think you need both.
In the presentation or the staff report, are you wanting more or less detail than what we just went through on those items?
Much less detail. I don't think we're trying to outline every single point of in section of the forthcoming ordinance.
So you want less, you want less detail than what we just went through in a PowerPoint? And then what do you want in this? I mean, I'm staff, I'm hella confused. So I, I'm-
Yeah, I'm struggling.
You want, you want, you want the public to be really informed, but you want to provide them less detail than what we just went through. That's what I just heard.
Like, it's not that I want to, to hide anything. It's, I'm trying to figure out what is a layperson's you know, need to know as we move forward to make this massive decision. And so, you know, you're putting me on the spot here. I, I think, you know, I studied this very-
Needs are. So this, this, by the way, is a summary of the items that we want to strengthen the current just cause. This is a summary in layman's terms. So to me, I, it's like, we're more than halfway there with this very, this is layman's terms. And so staff can leverage this, they can make it crisper, tighter, but like, I think they're like 80% there with this. And they can throw it into a PowerPoint. And I don't know what you want differently in a staff report, but.
There's rent stabilization. You don't-
Well, yeah, rent stabilization is a whole other thing. And we, that's, we're working on that. So.
But that, to me, would be, you would cover both topics. And I would rely on Janet to work with Heather to boil down some of this language. Not everything was as is. Some, most of them were, but-
I said 80%.
Okay, so, but there's a way to boil it down so it's a little more simple, but not hiding anything. And Janet, do you think you could do that?
Yeah, I know, I know what Renee is talking about. Renee and I have worked together long enough. I know exactly what she's asking for.
Okay, so at some point, we'll talk about this September meeting, but we are already going to block two hours for rent stabilization. So this is going to be-
So are we, are we talking about having a second meeting in September then, where our ordinance is?
Yeah, what I'm saying is they want-
So the first meeting would be a presentation in a simplified format. I think that-
You gotta turn your camera off. We can't hear you, Janet.
When you work with the language, uh-oh. Okay, I'm going to turn my camera off. If you guys can hear me, I'm going to turn that off because I think it's decreasing my bandwidth or something. I don't know. I'll take my hand down. I think what the, the first meeting in September, we should do, we should set aside time to have a PowerPoint to have an in-depth staff report that goes through both the rent stabilization or rent control. And also the changes to our existing just cause ordinance. And so we should make those, we should simplify those. Because I think when you work with this concept, these concepts, and, and Mayor Hellman and Vice Mayor Cuttrano have worked with them a great deal, you start to understand certain terms that the general lay public doesn't necessarily understand. And I think that we can present it in such a way that that's a, a more simplified form for people who are just not really looking at it in depth, but just sort of casually watching and saying, oh, oh, okay, I get that. I understand what that, what they're talking about there. That's what I think, Renee, Councilwoman Goddard, that's what you're looking for. Correct me, please, if I'm wrong.
It is what I, it is what I'm asking for, Janet. Thank you very much. And, and the point is, is to, I, I want this to succeed. It's not about, you know, and I'm not trying to slow this down. If we slow it two weeks and we've done a good introduction, it's an introduction to many people. Regardless of how many social media posts we've done. I've been through this a lot. So introducing and then jumping into the policy, to me, is always a good idea.
And I'll just reiterate that we've spoken about it more than twice. So.
I don't think I said twice, Mayor. I, I, I'm not sure that what I'm asking for is as unreasonable as the response.
I don't think it's unreasonable. I don't think it's unreasonable.
Okay, so thank you.
Move on. Is there any other questions or comments on this? We clear that what's happening on the 3rd of September and the 4th, excuse me, the 17th?
Correct. And maybe we should make sure that the clerk sends something out to all of us, making sure that nobody plans a vacation on the 17th.
Clerk hears you.
Uh, uh-oh. I think there is a conflict on the 17th.
Wait, are we talking about the second meeting in September? That would be the-
Yeah, August. I, I'm getting the August date. So it's August 3rd and we're not doing a special meeting on the 17th. So.
Right. We're talking about-
It is 7th and 21st.
And 21st. Yeah.
Janet, you've got to get those kids off the internet because we're losing you.
They swear they're not on it. Okay, I don't know.
So, if I may, just to repeat, so presentation for both eviction and rent on the September 3rd, and then potential first reading on the 21st of September.
That, that's my request.
For both.
Okay, just want to make sure I understand.
The first Wednesday is actually the September the 7th.
Yeah.
Just a thank you.
Okay, anything else? Are we ready to move on? Okay. Moving on to item number 24, adopt resolution authorizing town manager to execute a professional services agreement with Interwest Consulting for Public Works Consulting Services. Heather and Janet.
Well, I will tee this up. As you know, Hameed Chomspur was our interim public works director and his last day was Friday. And so we are looking for some support in the public works area. We've located a very well-qualified firm, Interwest. And they offer a variety of staff and a variety of services, which would include a project manager, Pat Echols, who- which would include a project manager, um, Pat Echols, who actually is a retired, um, Public Works Director for Fairfax about 20 years ago. So already knows our town very well. Um, and knows a lot of our projects. Um, and this also gives us access to surveyors and, and other help that we need within the public works arena. And, um, so this is our plan to move forward until we can, uh, uh, add some more staff and it's a ongoing, um, contract so that we can use them even after we get a full-time um, Public Works Director as needed. So if you have any questions, let me know and, um, we can have, um, uh, Darren, who is, um, the, one of the company representatives or Pat, um, come on if you'd like.
Any questions from the council before I open public comment?
Just one quick question, Mayor. Um, so, uh, upon, uh, a vote to, to authorize this contract and signatures, um, when, when could Interwest start seeing that, uh, Mr. Shamsapour is, has, has wrapped up his term?
Yeah, they're, they're prepared to start right away and, um, uh, actually, you know, this was on the agenda for the sixth, so, um, we're ready to go.
Thanks.
Okay, let's have a, have a comment, please.
Okay, members of the public wishing to comment on this item, you have three minutes. Please raise your hand. And I see one raised hand. Kelly Newman, you're unmuted now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I've not been involved with this very much, but I am a lifelong renter. And my, um, ignorant interpretation is that you guys are saying, oh, we need to ask permission from the realtors to go ahead and make real change. So if they don't show up and they don't, they, they're, they feel like, if they don't show up, right? It doesn't matter that they have so much power that they're going to control what you guys do. That's my impression. So I'm just saying, that's my ignorant impression. And I'm not expecting a correction or anything, but that's what I said after all this talking about it. And it's obviously not really set in stone that it needs a lot of work, but to keep kowtowing to them, to them, to them is not what this is about. This is about, they have all this control, right? And the renters have to have some control as well.
Kelly, we're actually, um, on item number 24.
Oh.
That topic has moved on from.
Well, never mind.
Thank you. Uh, okay, see.
So, yeah, just to clarify, we're, we're off of the just cause eviction topic. And on to the next item on the agenda, which is regarding a contract for Public Works Consulting Services. So the, uh, next speaker is Mark Bell, followed by Ling Shin Bell. Mark, you're unmuted now. Mark, you might need to unmute yourself. Hmm. I'm going to move on to Ling Shin Bell. And unmute you. Okay. You're unmuted now Ling Shin.
Okay. Hi, Michelle. Actually, it's me on both of them. My main computer started to freeze.
I see. Okay. So go ahead.
Okay. I, I seem to be on echo here.
You might need to turn off your computer while you speak.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's try that. Let me end the test. Okay. How's this?
That works.
Okay. So I was, you know, I thought, I looked at this and then I looked at the, uh, packet and we're paying $98,000 for three months of a public works. Uh, head. That's like almost $400,000 a year. And what I don't understand is $400,000 a year for a public works. And didn't you guys hire some experts who are supposed to be headhunters who could, you know, find us a public works director for some, I don't know how reasonable, but what, 175,000? In six months or however many months it's been. And this is the best that you can come up with? $400,000? I mean, I don't know. It's the town's money. You seem to have no regard for what's going on with the town's money. And this has been a trait that's been going on for quite a while. You can look at the cascade, striping, unstripping, restriping, unstripping, return it to normal, which is what? 65,000? You can look at seven years to get the park aid done. Seven years off of that grant was probably a hundred thousand dollars. You hire some unqualified incompetent facilitator at $360 an hour, that ended up costing us 65,000 and then accomplished nothing. $400,000 a year? That's the best you can do with the town's money that's being entrusted to you? I, I find it unbelievable, unconscionable that you couldn't have done a better job. What did Rick say the other day at the meeting? San and Selma filled four positions by putting it on, uh, wasn't next door, what's the other one? Patch. At a dollar a day, they got 20 applicants. They hired four of them. They were qualified. $400,000 a year? For a public works guy? Yeah. If you tell my cardiologist, I think he'll change profession.
Uh, is there someone speaking?
Um, I think Mark just somehow lost his microphone. We can't hear you now.
I turned, I turned off.
Oh, you're having some, yeah.
I tried, I tried to turn off. I'll, I'll check the audio section.
Um, Mayor, can I ask, this is not a three-month contract. I don't know where that figure is coming from. Uh, can we get some clarification on this?
Coming from the scope of work.
So there's an estimate there and, um, then the total not to exceed is, uh, 98,000. And so, um, if that, if we were getting close to that amount, we would come back to the council and, um, seek your direction, your approval for more if needed.
Okay. So it is approximately three months. I didn't see that in the contract.
That's an estimate based on $190 an hour, which is a fairly reasonable consultant rate at, um, uh, three months halftime, I believe.
And maybe you can speak to the projects that this person's going to work on.
Yeah. So projects include, um, we have about $5.8 million in the CIP for this year. That includes six bridges, paving, um, projects. Um, uh, there's some beginning of the dis, uh, remodeling, um, which is needed for functionality at the, um, fire station. Um, some, uh, re, reconfiguring of the staff areas, um, because we currently have five staff members who have no permanent seat placement. Um, so those are some examples. You're on mute.
Are we going to, I mean, I would hope that we would prioritize the large projects.
Yes.
Some of the smaller things for, uh, a consultant.
Yes. And we'll have a work order system where we're asking Interwest to work on this specific project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, Mayor, can I clarify if we're in public comment?
Yeah, I, we'd never officially closed it. I didn't see any other.
Yeah, there are no others. Okay. So you're closing it now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Yeah. Uh, no, I just have a comment just for the, for the public. So they understand that, you know, we've gone through two interims and we, we still have our contract with Ralph Anderson and Associates for hiring, um, Public Works Director. And they helped us, uh, find Heather, but we just upped the, the amount of money for that, that position. And we're hoping that that will help us entice somebody here. So we're, we're still in that process of trying to find a really qualified and fantastic public works director that's going to fit in here in Fairfax and, um, help us with all the things that need to get done. Um, but this is just to try to hold us over like we have been trying to hold our town over with the last two interim. So I'm happy, I'm happy to make this motion and I just want the public to understand that we're, we're doing our best to, to continue to build this team and give Heather and our staff members the support they need.
Thank you Vice Mayor.
Sorry, you made the motion? Did you make the motion?
Yeah, I just said I'm happy to make the motion.
I think you might have to say the word.
To adopt the resolution authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement with Interwest Consulting for Public Works Consulting Services.
I would second that and also just add that I want to thank Heather for being able to find uh, registered civil engineers usually charge a lot more than a hundred and ninety dollars an hour. And getting a firm that has someone who actually worked in Fairfax will also be an added benefit. So, thank you.
All right. Michelle, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cuttrono.
Yes.
Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ackerman is absent. So that's four eyes, one absent, motion passes.
Terrific. And thank you Heather. Okay, moving on to number 25, adopt a resolution appointing David Waltering as interim planning and building services director and approving appointment contact, contracts. Once again, Heather.
Sorry, it's the Heather Show today. So, um, we attached David's, um, resume, which is very impressive here. Um, and we can pull, um, David onto the screen if you'd like. Um, but he, uh, has had a full career as a planning director in other cities, most recently, um, in San Bruno, um, where, uh, he retired from San Bruno in 2018. Um, so very, um, uh, important and relevant experience there. Um, that was, um, he, his time included the San Bruno explosion. So, um, having to deal with, um, emergencies is something he's very good at. And he most recently served as an interim in the town of Ross. So he also knows our area very well. And plans to, um, work in our office about three days a week. Um, until we can find a, a long-term planning director. So I'm very confident in David's abilities and, um, want, very proud to bring this to, to you. Um, we, we definitely need this support as we move into the next phase of the, um, housing element and other important uh, long-term planning projects that we're doing. Um, and of course the, um, requirements, because David is a retiree, um, with the CalPERS system is that, um, he, um, can only take the, um, salary that is in the job description and salary range. Um, and no benefits are provided. So I'll answer any questions you may have, or if you'd like to bring David up as well, we can.
Um, could you maybe, um, I think I saw that the hourly rate is $84.14. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. That's the new, new rate that you approved in consent last week.
Okay, let's open public comment, but I would like to see David just to say hello. So if you could tee that up, that would be great. Michelle, can we open the public comment, please?
Yes. Uh, first I can, uh, find David. Can you raise your hand, please? I don't see him here.
Those fake ads really drive you mad, huh? The game looks so.
Um, Heather, do you see David? Oh, I see him now. Okay. David? Um, are you okay with me bringing you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I am going to promote you to panelist and your camera, uh, you can turn on your camera then. And in the meantime, if members of the public are interested in making a comment, please raise your hand. It's comments on this item only. And there you go.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. And I'm very pleased to be here this evening. And I would be very pleased to serve your community as the interim planning and building services director. I understand it's an interim position. And I've reviewed your town council resolution and the contract, the employment contract. I find it perfectly acceptable and I'm willing to sign that. Uh, in addition to working in this field for about 35 years, uh, over the last three years, I've done similar interim assignments for the city of Clayton, the city of Healdsburg, and most recently the town of Ross. And I've really enjoyed working with those communities. And I think I've had successful, mutually successful experiences in those communities and would very much look forward to working with your community. I, I heard the, the earlier discussion. And, uh, I would very much look forward to, uh, working with, uh, Town Manager Abrams and your town attorney, kind of trying to help sort all of that out. So, uh, in any case, I'm, I'm ready, uh, looking forward to working with you, all of you and serving your community. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Really nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm going to open the public comment and then we can come back and.
Okay.
I see one. I see one hand.
Yes. And that is Frank Egger and you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Frank Egger, Metaway here at Fairfax. Uh, I, I read, uh, David's, uh, experiences with his resume. And, um, I'm familiar with Healdsburg and the Mill District. Healdsburg approved a, a seven-story condo building with units selling for two plus million on average in the Mill District. Um, and I'm wondering if, if, if David will be proposing high-rise buildings for Fairfax's housing element similar to what was approved in Healdsburg. You know, when I ever ask a question, I never get an answer at a Fairfax council meeting. But I think it's a significant question I'm asking about high-rise buildings in your housing element here in Fairfax. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any other raised hands. Madam Mayor, if you want to close the public comment?
I'll close, close the public comment. Thank you. Janet has her hand up.
I do. I have a, uh, request actually. I'd like to have a, a two-person council subcommittee to work with David um, on housing element issues. Um, would that be something the council would entertain?
Yeah, I think, yeah, absolutely. I think, um, Chance and I are going to work with him on the rent stabilization just cause. Um, as a ad hoc subcommittee that we kind of already are. And we talked about it with Heather, uh, earlier this week in one of our sessions, working sessions. But I think you're referring to the housing element, right? Oh, you're, now Janet is...
Janet, I think you're frozen.
Um, Madam Mayor, if I may, if she's frozen, I, I know we discussed this as well and, yeah, the idea was to provide, um, some historical context for the, um, for the housing element and make sure, um, you know, that David was aware of the, the Fairfax way, which I think he, he's already starting to see and, um, uh, just, you know, get that going. So, um, you know, that could be...
Yeah, I just wanted to make the delineation of the, this is about, like you're saying, the housing element and providing more historical context and that kind of thing.
Yes, I agree. Those are two separate subcommittees.
Great. Go ahead, Barbara.
Um, I would just suggest for the housing element, it'd probably be a good thing to have Renee and I be on that subcommittee, um, because we have experience with the prior housing element and have quite a lot of tenure on this council, um, with the historical stuff. So if that's something, and it also is helpful that we're on the Affordable Housing Committee together. So it might be a good fit if you all are amenable to that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that Bruce isn't here for obvious reasons. He has, um, a wealth of experience.
It looks like he is, or he was. You see him, but there he is.
I do. Welcome back. Hey Bruce, um, we are on item number twenty-five. We are, uh, we haven't yet voted yet, but David Waltering is here. You can say hi to it. And we're discussing, um, the notion of an ad hoc subcommittee to help David, um, I guess, get up to speed with all things Fairfax housing-related contextual.
That's quite a project, but yes, a subcommittee sounds, yeah.
Where, I, I wasn't quite done. So, so Barbara is volunteering herself and Renee, and I had just said, well, it's too bad Bruce isn't here because I don't know if that would be something you'd be interested in or not, but, so now you're caught up.
Um, yeah, and, and I, in answer to that, I would be willing to do that, but it sounds like there's a lot of, a lot of, uh, perspective that a lot of us bring. For, for my part, I worked on the general plan to housing elements ago, so it's, uh, but I wasn't real specifically involved with the housing element, more with the rest of the general plan. But, um, I can also talk with David one-on-one just about general plan issues as well, as long as we don't violate the Brown Act by communicating with each other through David. I think we can all talk with him and I certainly look forward to doing so.
Okay, and Renee, are you interested in this role?
Yeah, yeah. Should you all choose, um, I, I could also, um, I could also cede to Bruce, but I would, I, I would be very happy to work with Barbara. Um, and David.
Okay, terrific. Do we, can I get a motion on that?
Yeah, I moved to, wait, do we have to, we have a motion for this item in addition to a motion to establish a ad hoc subcommittee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could that all be done in one motion or we need two motions? Two motions.
I would appreciate two motions.
Okay, so one, I'll adopt the resolution appointing, uh, David as Planning and Building Services Director on an interim basis and approve, and approving the appointment contract. Uh, and I'm also happy to make a second motion, um, establishing an ad hoc subcommittee of Councilmember Kohler and Councilmember Goddard to work on bringing David up to speed on housing element issues.
I would second those two motions.
Thank you. Michelle, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Um, yes. I would like to do a roll call vote. Um, I thought we were gonna have two separate motions, but now we have kind of a doubleheader.
Well, do, do two separate.
I'm gonna do two separate roll calls.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Clearly, clearly state which one you're doing.
So I'm going to do the first motion, which was to appoint David Waltering as interim planning director and planning and building director, and to approve the contract. So I'm gonna do a roll call on that one. Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
So that is eyes all. Motion passes. And the second motion to establish the ad hoc subcommittee consisting of council members Goddard and Kohler to work with our newly appointed Planning and Building Services Director. Congratulations, um, on issues around the housing element. So, uh, Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good night.
Look forward to chatting with you more very soon.
Look forward to working with all of you. Take care.
All right. Moving right along to our final agenda item. Number twenty-six, discuss and consider Pavilion Seismic retrofit project additional funding request. Heather, I think this is you again.
I promise it's the last one. Um, I, I do have a short presentation, uh, that was made by Hamid. Would you like to see it or would you like the, the super short Heather version?
I'm seeing head nods for the presentation.
Let's see it, yeah. Let me do that. And... How does that look to you?
Just fine. I mean, you could probably maximize it, but it's fine.
How's that?
Yeah, it's great.
Perfect.
Terrific. Um, okay, so, um, the Pavilion project that we're discussing today is, um, only the seismic upgrade and ADA improvements. Um, so, uh, not the electric kitchen and not the microgrid concept. Um, so, um, as you, you received a, a detailed staff report, um, and as you know, this building is a, um, it, it's a historic building. It's also, um, built on a midden. Um, it has an older foundation, an older roof. Um, and, um, it has been a project for quite some time. There is, um, FEMA slash CalOES funding, um, that has been dedicated to this project, um, but a very significant, um, match is also required um, for this project, um, by the town. And, um, as we, uh, mentioned before, we went back to CalOES and FEMA asking for quite a bit more, um, funding and time to be able to complete this project, which is very complex. Um, and they have informed us that, um, if the project continues, the maximum, um, amount that would be available is an additional two-hundred thousand and an additional six months of time, which is, um, frankly, pretty risky with a project of this nature, and I can talk more about that in a minute. So, um, this project has been, um, kind of on, on the town's radar since two thousand eight, so quite a long time. And, um, the scope includes, um, seismic upgrades to the foundation and then some ADA upgrades to the bathrooms. Um, it does not include, at this point, it does not include, um, reinforcing the roof, which would cost almost a million dollars, uh, more, seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand is the estimate right now. Um, and the structural engineers, um, believe that we could do the, um, foundation work, um, and then at some later date, we could do, we could do the roof. And there would, there would be some structural, you know, there would be some improvement in its, um, strength in an earthquake. Um, so right now, the Pavilion is, uh, I always like to say, kind of like my house, it's an older building and has an older foundation. It's not in danger of immediate collapse or anything like that. Um, this project would be simply to, to strengthen it for a future event that could happen. Um, and it would not provide anything like, you know, paint or, um, other upgrades to the building. So it would be pretty hard to notice once this, this project is completed, but it would provide some more, um, earthquake stability and then, of course, that ADA improvement to the, um, bathrooms. Um, so the original scope, um, started out quite a while ago. It was smaller, then it went larger, including both the, um, foundation and, um, the roof, the foundation, as I think I mentioned, um, is also, not only is it a historic structure, but it's also, um, uh, the rear portion is, uh, uh, appears to be on a midden, so there's a lot of risk of unknowns once we actually, you know, if we were to start that construction. Um, so in order to keep this project going, we would need, and that is without the roof, but with the, um, the, basically the, the structure underneath the building, um, and ADA upgrades to the, to the bathrooms, we would need an extra four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, two-hundred of which could come from FEMA OES, and the remainder would be an overmatch from the town. So in addition to the, um, twenty-five percent match that we are already providing. And anything additional, um, let's say there was a, a costly delay, um, you know, because of artifacts or, um, other things there or, um, construction issues or, um, other issues, that would all be the responsibility of the town. Um, so in terms of, you know, this is quite a large project, especially for a town without a, a permanent Public Works Director or other staff um, that can handle this kind of project right now, especially with the risks involved with the historic structure and the, and the site, um, is quite sensitive. Um, so right now, the estimate for the project is, um, um, almost three million dollars. Um, about two million dollars of that would come from FEMA OES, but, um, the remaining, at least a million dollars would come from the town. And so if I was to take a step back from this project and consider, you know, if the town were to spend a million dollars, um, would the Pavilion seismic and the bathroom ADA be the first priority for the town? I think that's a really important consideration, especially given the, um, the paving and bridge projects, um, that we have out there right now. And then, of course, the risk, which I mentioned, um, before, so we would have that overmatch of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, and then we'd be responsible for any, um, contingency funds, so anything that comes up. And, um, this is really the, the time for a go-no-go decision. Uh, because right now, we've done the design and, um, that is all, you know, essentially shovel-ready. And so if the council doesn't want to proceed with this, we would have that ready in the case of a, another grant opportunity from, um, FEMA CalOES. And, um, this current, um, grant is at the twenty-five percent level plus the overmatch, um, for, um, for the town, but the newer, uh, FEMA grants are ten percent match. So, um, there are, you know, some good reasons to, um, press no on this now and, um, and let us come back to you with this, you know, when we have another opportunity. Um, it's not something I normally recommend. I, I really like to get projects done, um, but in this case, this is a very, very risky project. And that was the last slide. I'll leave it here in case, you know, I don't want you to get lost in, in too much of these details. Just, um, you know, to sort of understand that this is the point at which to say yes or no. Um, and then we'll still have to wait for FEMA and CalOES to decide if, if they want to continue. That's my presentation.
Thank you. Am I on mute?
No, I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Um, do you mind taking down your screen so I can, so I can see folks? So, there we go. Yeah. Um, okay, Councilmember Kohler.
Yeah, I have two questions. Or maybe it's three. Um, one of the things in the staff report talked about getting a six-months extension for the project, which we don't know that we can do. Um, and that would take us to sometime in two thousand twenty-three, but can I correct that if we don't make that, first of all, we'd have to get the extension, which we don't know that we're gonna get, which gives us about another year. If we don't make the extension, then FEMA will not give us the money that they say they will towards the grant, correct?
Right, so, um, they, they want us to be finished as soon as possible. Um, and the current, um, grant allocation ends in, uh, May twenty-twenty-three, and we need to, you know, we need to have dry construction, um, about six months' worth of active construction. And so we, you know, we're now, um, well into summer here, and so we need that next season, that next...
Okay, but my question is...
I'm sorry.
I don't think there's any way we can meet that timeframe. We're gonna find artifacts and we're gonna have to stop. And we are getting through summer and maybe we won't be able to do work because of the endangered species, et cetera. But May twenty-twenty-three, if we get the extension, is the deadline. If we don't make that deadline, which I don't think we would make, would FEMA give us the money that you showed on that slide or not?
Yeah, so we need to commit to, to meeting that deadline, which is six months from May twenty-twenty-three, so October, I think that is.
Okay.
But, yes, you're absolutely right. Um, this is extremely risky because...
Okay, well, thank you. And then my second question, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I know we're getting late, um, is all those figures that you had there, which added up to the town's nut of something like around one and a half million, um, does not include the seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for the roof, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, um, and I have a few comments, but those were my questions. So I think your other point that you made at the end was that if we waited for a new FEMA grant cycle, the match is ten percent, not twenty-five percent. That's, I heard that correctly, right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Renee?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Heather. I know that you've inherited quite a, quite a project. Um, question about what you think, I mean, can you project anything, any of the grants, um, changing, are there funding sources that are coming down the pike that you feel? Um, any level of confidence might come our way in a reasonable amount of time? Um, is there anything on the horizon, besides the fact that the newer FEMA grants will only be a ten percent match? Are there other opportunities for funding? Um, so that we could do more, um, like what it is that we had hoped to do?
Well, what CalOES and FEMA have told us is that, um, there would be an opportunity... Well, what Cal OES and FEMA have told us is that um, there would be an opportunity um, for funding in the next hazard mitigation cycle. Um, and hazards are quite prevalent in California. And we would be competitive in that, you know, we're, we're shovel-ready at this point. Um, we have a um, a BCA, which is basically a um, a return on uh, investment sort of uh, value that is above one. So we would be competitive there. So yeah, this is a really, um, this is a tough decision because it's kind of um, a burden hand. But is it a good burden hand uh, versus, you know, um, being able to kind of take a do-over? And um, hopefully get all of the funding that we need for the full project um, at a ten percent match instead of uh, more than twenty-five percent match for a portion of the project that we need.
Okay, are there questions? I'm going to open public comment.
Okay, are there any members of the, oh, yes, oh, let me start the timer. Okay, um, any, any comments on this item? I see one, and that is Frank Egger. You're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Frank Egger, matter of way, here in Fairfax. This restoration can be a great project. The pavilion sits on top of a native midden. Twice in the nineteen-sixties, we dug up significant native relics. Once when we had to dig a new sewer line from the pavilion to Bellinas Road area. At another time, we had to do some urgency foundation work. At one time, some of the relics were in the safe at Town Hall. I don't know where they are today. But um, should the project go forward, you'll need to be prepared for a, a major native, native dig in, in the midden area. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this topic? Please raise your hand.
I don't see any.
I don't either. Okay, I'm closing public comment. I know I have comments. Looks like Barbara, you do as well. Go ahead.
Okay, so I would say we should put this project on hold and for the following reasons. It's very likely, even with a six-month extension that we don't know if we're going to get, there's no way we'll meet the timeline. We know there are artifacts, there's a midden, and possibly even remains under there. We'll have to stop work for an indefinite period of time to address these. And we may have several start-stop events. There's also other reasons why I don't think there's any way we would meet that timeframe. Uh, we don't have a permanent public works director to take on and oversee the project from start to finish, which would also cause more delays. Um, there's other uncertainties that I believe our town manager brought it out. Um, we know there will be another state emergency this year. We're already seeing wildfires in Yosemite and other places in the, in the state. So we know that there will be uh, a new grant cycle from Cal OES. And since we're shovel-ready, we would be in a great position to receive the new grants. And also, we might be able to get the roof uh, covered with a, a grant, which is a significant amount of money. If we put the project on hold now, um, I think we can, we can devote our resources to other capital projects with our, our help of our consulting uh, public works guys. And this is going to be a great project when we ultimately take it on. But I do believe we're going to need, this is going to take some time, even with being shovel-ready. We know we will end up with, you know, delays that we can't foresee. And I think just the last piece of that is, when I asked Heather if we didn't meet the timeframe, and it also depends on, we even got an extension. Let's assume best-case scenario, we get the extension, October twenty twenty-three. I don't see any way we would meet that deadline without diverting resources from everywhere else that we need to work on. And um, FEMA wouldn't pay us the money from the grant because we wouldn't meet the deadline. So I'd rather we put it on hold now, we can open up the pavilion for use and get this ready for a better time.
I didn't see who had their hand up first, but.
I'll just quickly state that uh, I'm in concurrence with Councilmember Koller. And I thank her for her concise and very clear uh, and comprehensive comments.
Thank you. Bruce?
Yeah, I, I'm also in agreement. Uh, in short, it's, there's a lot of risk and including not only the financial risk and the risk of running into uh, midden's or, or remains underground that are going to slow it down. But also just the risk of us being short-staffed and having staff turning over in the midst of this. It just isn't a great time to do it. Of course, going the other way, there's, we, we can hope that we can get a better grant um, at a future time, possibly soon in the future. Because as Heather says, there are a lot of disasters in California, so there'll be more grant cycles. But there's a possibility that we wouldn't. But I think the risk on balance, it's, it's pretty strongly in the direction of we should um, call it on this project right now. And I really appreciate a very good staff report and appreciate all the work that's been done on it. Uh, both of our interim public works directors of, of, that we've recently had spent a considerable amount of time on this project and the negotiations uh, that, that has been. It's been very thoroughly explored and uh, that's why I thank staff for that work. And I hope we can get back to it. And it is very clear that this does not affect one way or the other. The uh, the, the inverter that we want to put into the pavilion, which just as a quick update on that, that inverter is still not available, but we are still working on it. Uh, but the uh, and eventual microgrid and uh, and then also the kitchen that's being worked on now. And the water heater that's already been put in. So all this goes on, this is not, is not affected by, by this project. And when we do get back, assuming that we can to this project, I, as, as Councilmember Koller said, it would be great if we could include the roof in it. If we did that, um, I would, you might not be surprised that I would highly recommend a metal roof because it'll last a much longer time. And it's really good for solar that you can put onto a metal roof without puncturing the roof. And get, when you did the roof, you'd have to take the solar off anyway, and then put it back on. And doing that is a significant part of the cost of the solar. So it would be well worth it to include getting new panels and uh, uh, and replacing them while doing it because the cost of the panels is the smallest part of the cost of taking the solar off and putting it back on and rewiring it. So those are just some thoughts for going forward and, and if we can include all that when we think about it next time, that would be a better project. So um, that's my thoughts.
I have thoughts, but Renee, do you want to?
Uh, yeah, I just uh, concur with um, with my colleagues and with staff's recommendation. And uh, thank you, Heather, for the deep thought and the research you've put into making that recommendation. I know um, that's a big decision to make. So, thank you.
Um, thank you. Yeah, I agree with everyone. I guess I would say that um, I, I don't want to run with the current scope. I think this is a public asset that I think, you know, what is it, two thousand eight? You know, like, I, I think we should take a more strategic look at what this building could be. Um, and I, uh, there's, just off the top of my head, but there's so many more creative people that know more about architecture and what this, I mean, we know we have staffing, we, we have nowhere to put staff. It's not ADA, I mean, ADA for bathrooms is great, but if you're in a wheelchair, just getting into that building is a problem. Um, I would love to explore whether that could be a cooling center for when we have crazy hot days, which are becoming more and more frequent. So there's a lot of things like swirling in my head. I've discussed um, wanting to have rainwater catchment and irrigate the fields. Um, so I don't want to like plug and play next time a funding opportunity comes up. I would really like to scrap it and start over and really, like I said, take a strategic look at what, how we can best leverage this amazing public ass, asset that we have. And I'll leave it at that.
So could I make a motion that we uh, put the pavilion on hold for now? And uh, thank you to staff and interim
Yes.
Works directors for all their work on this.
Second that.
Would you like me to take a roll call vote?
I would, please.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Koller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cotrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
All eyes.
Thank you. Almost there. Okay, um.
Town managers report, anything Heather you want to offer?
Well, I'll just briefly um, remind and thank you, Bruce and others for um, mentioning this. But um, we did install um, uh, sorry, six new um, heat pump, electric water heaters um, throughout town facilities. So really proud of Fairfax for walking its talk. That's really exciting.
Super exciting. Thank you. Um, and I'd love to see that in the newsletter. Next time we can squeeze that in, that'd be great. Um, I'm looking at the online uh, agenda and I don't see that the agenda forecast was linked. And I noticed that last time too, and I, I know that we talked about it in our strategic planning offside as something that we thought was offering the community transparency and a very um, strong enhancement that we implemented several months ago. So I'm just wanting to know if we can get back on track with that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, uh, this last packet was a bit of a um, a late-night rush to get it finished on time.
Yeah, totally understand. I just wasn't sure if it was um, deliberate or not because I don't think it was linked last meeting either. So if, Michelle, do you have it handy or could we give some insight to the public on what we're forecasting for, for August? I know I can speak to the presentations um, we're expecting.
Hi, this is the town clerk. Uh, it definitely wasn't deliberate that it was off. And last time it was, it actually was there. Um, it just wasn't linked properly, but then we fixed it.
Oh, okay.
So that, that's the good news and it should be there still. Um, I can just, I, I don't have the um, what happens is I keep my own annotated version of this and then I take the annotations off to, to um, share with the public. And I don't have a non-annotated version, I'm afraid. If you like, I could read the.
Yeah, I think reading it is fine.
Okay, so just um, it's opening. Um, so for August third, what we have coming up are three presentations to the council. One from Senator Mike McGuire, one from PG&E, and one um, I know it's on homelessness. It's not clear to me who will be making the presentation. And then.
I think we're, we're, we're still waiting to hear back from HHS. And then I think Jansen Renee are also contributing to a presentation.
Yeah, so that's still, um, so this is a working document also, so that's a, another issue. Um, it's not, I just want the public, as long as they're listening, to understand that this is not an agenda. It's just a, a list of potential agenda items as we try to figure out what, um, what has to be done and what, what can be done.
We understand. So, you know, and I think we're also expecting a presentation from the library, right?
On, that is, yeah, I'll, I'll keep reading. That's the next on the list. Yes. Sorry, I miscounted. That's four. Um, and then we have some of our usual business that's on uh, adopting a resolution to allow us to continue with hybrid uh, meetings. And um, the continuing emergency at one ninety-five Pine, we're not sure how long that will um, take to be resolved. Financial statements, minutes, council member reports. Um, also in August, we uh, adopt the resolution establishing the living wage for, based on the prior year's CPI. Uh, we will be getting the quarterly report from the recreation department. And um, the notice of amendments to resolution establishing wages and benefits for management confidential and part-time employees. As, as well as a notice of amendments to the reso um, amending the MOU, the memorandum of understanding with our non-management employees, who are part of the SEIU, the labor union, as well as a notice of amendments for the reso-amending the MOU with the Police Officers Association. Um, we are hoping to have a draft strategic plan available for adoption. And the resolution on the rebate program for the all-electric landscaping ordinance that you adopted last week. As well as a, a resolution for the short-term rental fees to go with the program that you adopted last week by ordinance. And we've just been talking about um, just cause eviction. So a, a possible ordinance, we've, we've uh, looks, sounds like that's going to be in September instead of August, so that's something I will move. Um, we are looking at the outdoor dining ordinances and resolution that goes along with that. You adopted, you extended the temporary permit, uh, temporary permits to December fifteenth to give you time to develop a more permanent outdoor dining program. And um, we potentially have the audit report, some plans and possibly bid uh, regarding a situation at seventy-eight Reden. And uh, finally, a grand jury report has come out and we will need to do a response to that. You'll need to approve it on August third to make the grand jury's deadline of September sixth, which is just the day before your September meeting. And that's on the electrification of buildings. So that's August. You want me to go on with September?
No, I, I, well, I, I think we just kind of made some tweaks. Um, Bruce will get you up to speed with how things landed with just cause and rent stabilization, but um.
Can I just suggest something to think about for the agenda-setting committee? That sounds like a twenty-hour meeting. I think um, you know, we usually don't do four presentations. We kind of try for one. But even um, anyway, I think it would be a good idea to look at that a little more harshly. Uh, because I know I, I'm tough, but I'm not that tough. Just a, a thought.
Yeah, I'm, I'm tracking with that completely, especially we, one of the presentations we heard, based on their budget, their, of time that they, they had asked for, you know, over an hour for their presentation, uh, like an hour and a half. And it might have even been conservative. So it's uh, it's definitely something that's come up with the agenda-setting committee since we've gotten that information. Um, and yeah, well, noted. noted.
Was that HHS?
No, it was PG&E. Mark, I think, asked for an hour and a half at least.
Yeah, he's not getting that. That's not what we agreed on. There's been emails this week. But I hear that, too, Barbara. So we will fine-tune. Anything else?
All right, speeding adjourned. Have a nice evening.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.